This is Jessica Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, Ms. Tricia Pitco, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Cunelli, Mr. John Llewellyn. Ms. Carnell is here at the starting time as well. We do expect Mrs. Lou McCormick as well. You may see a vacancy here. The Board of Finance is meeting tonight and going over the Board of Education Quarterly Financial Report, and they have asked Dr. Tidal to be there for the beginning of their meeting, so he will be joining us in progress. If I could have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Starting as usual with student reports from Fairfield-Ludlow High School, Mr. Nene and Ms. Frango, who wishes to go first?
All right. So about two weeks ago, there was the eighth grade parent night, and it's basically for not only the students but the parents as well, and they get an inside look on what the transition into high school is going to be like. Eighth graders, as well as their parents, get the opportunity to take tours of Ludlow for the first time, and Ludlow leaders actually do this, which is a great program usually for the juniors. Last Tuesday was the senior year superlative photos, which is always fun because the seniors get to dress up to match their superlative, and it's actually a really quick process, like five minutes in between a class, so it doesn't really take up a lot of time. And actually, right now is the dodgeball tournament that the Future Business Leader of America Club is sponsoring, and all you needed to participate in that was $5 and a signed concussion slip, and you could make your own team, or you could be placed in one, and it was offered for all grade levels, so should be fun.
Additionally, before the next meeting, we have a few events coming up. We have the acapella night coming up, which is both Ludlow and Ward. It's going to happen at Tomlinson Middle School, and we have the sophomore dance, and there's going to be the administration of the SAT in place of the usual CAPT exam for the juniors.
Thank you. Any questions for our Fairfield-Ludlow High School students? Mrs. Maxon Cunelli, followed by Mrs. Gerber.
Just to clarify, the acapella night, I assume if it's the same as past years, it also involves all of the middle schools as well, is that correct? Yeah, just put in two cents that it is an absolutely amazing night this Friday at Tomlinson for just $5, that's just another demonstration of the tremendous music here. Thank you for mentioning it.
Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I was going to also pile on about the acapella night, but Mrs. Maxon Cunelli beat me to it. Also, I wanted to congratulate the two student reps. I saw pictures of both of you for your senior superlatives, so they looked great.
No other questions? Ms. Grillo, no.
Schuster.
Schuster, I'm sorry.
Yeah, unfortunately, she couldn't make it tonight, but I'm still here. So since the last time we met, we had our Ward basketball game last Thursday. It was a doubleheader, girls and boys. We actually played Ludlow, so I'm proud to say we won both. It was a great attendance, it was a sold-out crowd. Also, it was a game for coaches, the game was Coaches for Cancer, so it's like a fundraising campaign to raise funds for cancer research, so everyone wore pink shirts to support the cause, so we're all excited about that. We rose approximately $1,000, but you know, we still haven't gotten money from the bake sales and stuff yet, so still waiting on that. We also have the SAT on March 2nd for all 11th graders, so the guidance counselors and stuff have been helping us with that. We also have the CAPT science test for all 10th graders on March 3rd, and the solar project is moving according to plan. It's scheduled to finish around mid to late March, so that'll be awesome. Also, the course selection process is going on for 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th graders, so we're all excited about kind of picking the stuff that we're going to do next year. The guidance counselors are very helpful with accommodating our needs, and other than that, we all enjoyed a four-day weekend, so it feels weird to be back, but we're getting used to it already, so.
Questions for our representative from Ward? I have one question. Both Mrs. Maxon Cunelli and myself were at the Ward-Ludlow basketball game, very, very exciting, especially for one school perhaps more than the other, but it was a very exciting game throughout. Halloween happens in October, and I didn't quite understand all the costumes that Ludlow wore. Can somebody explain to me all the costumes that were in the audience that night?
It's actually very funny. It's just like an outstanding, like, senior tradition, I guess, that the Ward-Ludlow basketball game, we just all dressed up in costumes. It's a lot of fun, and as you saw, we were all very dressed up, so.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you very much. We'll move on to public comment. This is the time to have a public comment on non-voting items that are on the agenda, which would be items number 5A and 5B and 6H. The rest of the items on the agenda are voting items, and so you can comment on the voting items when they're up for a vote. So anybody wishes to come forward at this time to talk about agenda items that are not up for vote? Okay, thank you. We have two major presentations. We have a number of voting items that, for the board, I'm hoping will be administrative in nature, and that we can therefore allow maximum amount of time for 5A, the Student Superintendent Search Process, where Mr. Robert Rader, the Executive Director of CAE, is with us, and then for the second major item, the Racial Imbalance Update, with Malone and McBoom, who aren't here yet, but they're scheduled to come about 8:15 or so. And so assuming that there won't be a lot of debate on the voting items that are fairly administrative in nature, I'll plan the timing of these two items accordingly. So, Mr. Rader, if you would come forward and talk to us about a process that boards get to do every once in a while.
Thank you for having me.
And again, for the TV audience, please introduce yourself for the purpose of the -- we're live, by the way. We're streaming in 170 countries.
Thought you were.
No, not really.
My name is Bob Rader. I'm the Executive Director of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. First of all, I want to thank you for your membership for many years. Fairfield has always been very involved with us. You come to things, and we appreciate that, and you're getting your monies, we're certainly from our association, and I hope that will continue for many years. I'm here to talk about the Superintendent Search Process. I'm not here to push any particular service that does this type of work. I have copies of these books. I noticed some of the information was out there. I don't know, do members of the board need another copy, or do you all have yours? Okay, that's fine.
Yes, each board member has one.
Okay, well, that's great. So, I have spoken with Dr. Tidal about this process and when he will probably be leaving, and let me just start out just saying that feel free to ask questions. I've done this probably about 55 times now, this search process. It's something that many districts go through fairly often. Fairfield has not in many years, and that's probably a good thing.
Excuse me, just, do you want people to interrupt you as you're going through?
Anytime.
Wait till the end?
Anytime.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get through everything because I know where I'm going with this. But I always tell people that the Superintendent Search Process is a process that helps a board bond, hopefully brings it closer to the community, brings in a new face who, whether male or female, can bring some great new energy to the district, even though you already have a lot of energy. So I know some look at this whole process with dread, and there is a lot of work to be done. In the end, hopefully, if things go right, things will be better for the district, and you'll have a way to march towards the future in a positive way, and I note that Dr. Tidal is leaving under good circumstances. I like that because I always encourage boards to use the outgoing superintendent as a source of information on things like what that superintendent saw as may happen in the future, where you should be aiming for, what kinds of obstacles or challenges that others might not see if they haven't been in that seat before. So I encourage you to do that. Use Dr. Tidal for information. I always tell the superintendent and the board that should get up to the point possibly of, you know, once you start naming candidates or actually looking at candidates, that's when the superintendent who is in place should really bow out. There's really no role at that point. You've made your decisions, you've gotten his or her input, and at that point, you should take it from there as far as sort of being on your own with a consultant. So let me start with some basics. First of all, the discussion of the search, such as this, can certainly be done in open session as it is being done tonight, before the public. I encourage all boards to do as much before the public as they are comfortable doing, certainly if you're talking about candidates or anything like that, or having interviews, that should not be done in public, and the Freedom of Information Law exempts from public, from the public, well, from FOI, so they're not really meetings. Job interviews and related meetings for superintendent and other executive-level employment positions. So you should feel very free about making use of the fact that you can work in executive session, but I always think it's better for what you feel you can do in public to do it, and certainly updates to the public should be given on a regular basis. You should let the public know what, where you are in the process and what's happening. So there are basically two ways in which a board will work with a consultant, and can I assume that you're going to use a consultant, not try to do this yourself?
We have not talked about it, but this community has in the past always used one, so I think it's probably fair on your part to assume that, but this board has not talked about that yet.
Okay, well, certainly, I would just say that it's in your interest to use a consultant. Consultants know who the people are, they're better at handling the paperwork. You don't want your central office doing that, it would be inappropriate, plus they know where to find people, and that's one of the problems these days, is that the, a lot of what used to be considered a fairly rich pool of people is smaller for a number of reasons, and some of them are the question of certification. If you're bringing in somebody from outside the state, they may not be fully certified in Connecticut. There are pension issues. You bring somebody from outside the state, and they may not get as much value out of staying here with a pension, so they may not want to come in. There are also issues on some boards of superintendent-board relationships not being great. Certainly, that is a turnoff for any particular candidate. In addition, the superintendent these days, in these days of heightened accountability, is very often the lightning rod for decisions that are made by the board and the superintendent, certainly with or without his or her recommendation, but certainly that has become a problem, and because of that, people don't necessarily want to put in the commitment and the time to be a superintendent. In addition, over the years, as salaries of teachers and principals have gone up, superintendents have really not gone up by the same percentage, and the result of that is, and I'm not talking specifically, obviously, about Fairfield, but the truth of the matter is that some people would rather not have the extra nights and the long times over the summer when they have to work as a superintendent, because there's been salary compression, and it might not be worth it to move up. On the other hand, I would tell you that if you have anybody that you've sort of the grow-your-own type of thing, where somebody in the district may be available, may be a good pick to be a candidate, I would say go through this process anyway. My fear is always that a district will say, okay, well, we know that Joe's been, you pick a position in the district, we think he'd be good. You might be right, but as soon as there's a problem, the, I can assure you, members of the community will say things like, well, you didn't do your due diligence. That person should have been put up against everybody else, and that is really what we believe is the best practice, that everybody goes through the same process with the same questions, and we'll get to that in a little while. One of the biggest issues that will face the board just as you're starting is whether to work as a committee of the whole or to have a subcommittee, a search committee, or a committee of the whole plus others that you invite onto the board for this reason. They're not really board members, but it's an enlarged board for the purposes of searching for a superintendent. Used to be, what happened was that boards would set up a search committee with only a few members of the board, so there's no quorum issue, and then members of the public, and I always call them Noah's Ark committees, because they'd have two administrators, two parents, two teachers, and that was not a bad way to get search input from others who aren't on the board. However, we generally recommend, and certainly this is the board's decision, we're out of it as CAE, but we recommend now that you commit yourself to being a committee of the whole. It will make things easier, it'll probably help communications about what's going on within the board, and that doesn't mean you don't get input from others, and I'm going to tell you in a second how that happens, but the reasons we don't generally push for a committee at this point are three. First of all, confidentiality. You're all sworn to confidentiality, you're agents of the state in your role as school board members, and you must uphold the laws on confidentiality. When you start working with others, even if they're well-intentioned, the more other people know about what's going on, the less confidential, confidentiality there might be, even if these are good people that you trust. I saw this years ago in the city of Hartford when I was helping with the search, and the truth of the matter there was not everybody on the board really understood confidentiality. They made promises to the consultant who I was working with and helping for everybody not to say anything until they got down to three candidates. This was on a Tuesday. By Wednesday, the next morning, it was in the front page of the Hartford Current who the candidates were, and I got a call from one of those candidates saying, Bob, I didn't even have time to tell my board that I was considering this. It put that superintendent in a very awkward position. It did not make the city of Hartford look good. Hopefully, there are much better people now in the city on the school board, but that confidentiality issue is always very, very important. Don't forget, you're not only bringing somebody in, but you're also trying to sell them on Fairfield, what a nice town it is, what a great school district you have, and if they see that people are not confidential, that can be a real problem. Second reason that search committees are, in many cases, on the outs, is that not everybody on the committee will be willing to be as candid and talk as openly as board members would among themselves. For instance, I've talked to teachers who have served on the search committee, and they have told me that they're not as likely to say anything with their principal sitting right next to them. They can't be as candid as you might get if you use a committee of the whole and then use the consultants, which I'll explain in a minute. The third reason that these search committees are sometimes difficult is that the search committee may work very hard, interview a number of candidates, come up with three great candidates, they send to the board, and then the board finds out other information, perhaps by reference checks, perhaps by talking to other people or doing a site visit, and decide not to accept any of the three as final candidates. Very often, the committee will leave feeling, you know, disappointed, discouraged, and you certainly don't want to do that with a new person coming on when it should be really a time of great pride and really looking towards the future. So those are the three main reasons that I found for not using a search committee. Again, you certainly can if you want to. That would be something you would talk about with a consultant. You should know that if you can do a search committee, it's usually the superintendent, the board chair, working with members of the board, will decide who is on the committee itself. Let me tell you now how, you know, it's usually done this these days. You hire a consultant. The consultant's job is not only to find you good people and to go through the paperwork to make sure it's right and that you have everything you need. The search consultant's job is also to work with you to find out what the community wants. So what the consultant will generally do is sit down with members that you pick out of the staff, maybe of the town council or city council, of parents, administrators, other teachers, to find out what you're looking for, and what usually happens is the consultant will also hold some town hall meetings where anybody from the community can come in and talk about the process and talk about what they're looking for in the superintendent. They might do other interviews with people that you'd like to see, you know, think about these issues, as well as they will talk to all the members of the board. And what happens at the end of that is that you will get a report from the consultant that will tell you what people in the community and all these other people who have been talked to are recommending. This is what they think the community needs in a superintendent. Now, everybody wants a superintendent who can walk on water. We haven't found one of them yet, and if we do, we'd have to divide them up so many different ways, but there are certain things you might want to think about looking for. If you think you, your population is going to decrease, if you think you're going to have some issues with minority representation, I know there's a discussion afterwards for at least one school, you might want somebody who has handled these kinds of issues before. You might want somebody who has worked in buildings before if there are issues concerning the building, a financial expert if you think that you're going to especially need somebody with some kind of a, I don't want to say specialty, because it's not really a specialty, but who has dealt with the kind of issues that you see coming before you. So you would then hopefully include somebody who will talk about that. So you get this report, and the report isn't only good for the purposes of the search committee or the search itself, it's really a good discussion for board members of what other people are thinking about, not only the search, but about what the district needs as a whole. We've seen them come back where they say, we need a lot more discussion, a lot more communication with parents, that type of thing. So it might not exactly fit into, this person has got to be able to speak with parents, but it might tell you that this is something you ought to be thinking about. Let's go back to the whole issue of the consultant. So how do you pick a consultant? Well, there are four or five firms, and I have a list of them, who specialize in Connecticut. There are CES, which as you know is your Regional Educational Support Center, Support Council. Obviously, CAE has a search committee, search service. I keep out of those, staff keeps out of these, simply because we don't want to be in the position of deciding who superintendent should be for any district. However, I would remind you that even if you go with one of the other search consultants, we are, you are still members of CAE. You can call me anytime for some guidance, some help, some discussion, and I'm very glad to do that, and if you end up going outside the state, certainly I'd be glad to contact the contacts I have, because I have them, there are 50 other, 49 other executive directors who I'd be glad to talk to about a particular person. I've gotten some really interesting information before, a little embarrassing to that school district. I had one where I called and the candidate, apparently the reason he was leaving was he had an affair with the board chair, and everybody thought they should, that he should go, and they thought in Connecticut, people would, are more liberal and would be fine with this whole idea. I don't know who they think we are, but that always seems to get a laugh. But their consultant will do a lot of that, that type of checking for you, reference checking and so on, and we'll get to that. But the consultant will do the clerical work, will do the work vetting the candidates, and hopefully will serve as your advisor, just like your lawyer would when you get into various aspects. They're your chief advisor for this kind of work. To find a consultant, you can use what I have. I am not sure if your charter says that you specifically have to go through an RFP process. That's something that I can't answer for you, but you'll have to find out. Generally, there are, because this is a personal services contract, you don't have to go through an RFP, so then in those cases, I just suggest that the board chair or somebody designated by the board chair call up the search services and just suggest that they may want to send a proposal in. They know what you're asking for, they do it all the time. You don't have to go through, we want this and this and this and this. There's pretty much standard as to what they will provide. Usually, after you get those, and by the way, that could be for an outside consultant too, some outside-the-state consultant, I know Hazard Young did your last one. We have worked with Hazard Young, they're good people. I'd love to see a collaboration, and certainly you could ask for it if you wanted, if you decide to use our service and Hazard Young. If not, that's fine too, whoever you use is fine with us, but in those cases, you can also call up a Hazard Young and say, this is what we're looking for. Usually, what happens is you will get the proposals. You should give them about two weeks to do a proposal. When you get the proposal, within the next week or so, the board should meet and decide, or whoever it is looking at these should meet and decide which of the best three proposals. Have the person come in and, have the three consultants come in and talk to them, see who you match. I always suggest you ask a lot of open-ended questions, so you really get a feel for the person. We suggested some questions in this booklet, I don't have to go through those, but I always suggest you ask questions like, well, what if we don't want to do that? Will it save us money? How do you propose to do this? I would ask them that first question about, you know, search committee or committee of the whole, and they may very well say search committee, but you're the ones who are going to be making the final decisions, so trust your consultant, but remember the final decision, even if you go to a search committee, is up to the board as per the laws of the state of Connecticut. Any other questions on that part of getting a consultant? Any questions at all? Yes?
You mentioned there was about four or five consultants, but I only got the name of two. You said--
I have the list here.
Okay.
Nezdek does some of them. They're the ones who do the most in the state, Nezdek, CES, and us. Like, I have some others who asked to stay on the list. I haven't, I don't think they've done a-- I don't think they've done a search in years, but I'll give you the list as I leave.
Could you talk a little bit about the pros and cons of a search firm that is in Massachusetts and may be able to identify potential candidates in Massachusetts better than a Connecticut firm would, or vice versa? And how often does a Connecticut superintendent come from out of state?
I think that, well, certainly you have other states that they come from. I mean, we have some who came from New York, such as, you know, in Westport. Westport current superintendent is from New York. A lot come from Massachusetts. Let me tell you a little about outside before I get into your issue. Having worked in New York at the New York State School Board for 15 years, I came to Connecticut 20 years ago, and I found there are some differences that somebody from New York may have no idea about. Let me suggest this. And by the way, I think the superintendent next door in Westport, I think he started out in Connecticut. Connecticut is different in that, like Massachusetts, a lot of the decisions are made by the town, the town council, with the city council, you know, your budget. You have to go to them for your funding, at least the bottom line. We know that that's full of politics and so on, that the town usually owns the schools. New York and most other states are very different. When I was in New York, we never had anything to do with the towns. The cities owned the, the school districts owned the buildings. They went out to referendum every year. If they didn't pass a referendum, there's an austerity budget they went through. But there is none of this extra layer of government we seem to have here in Connecticut. And I'm not saying it's good or bad, it's just extra as to what I was used to. So I have seen people come into Connecticut and they don't know how to deal with the tough job to start out, dealing with nine-member board, or however many people you have on the board, and then have to go over to the town and get their okay on some things. It's a different culture. Same thing I could tell you with running on a political line. In New York, very rarely do they run on a Republican or Democrat line. They will run on just independent, you just get enough names on a petition and anybody runs. So it's a very different type of thing, and you might want to think about that. As far as your exact question, Mr. Chairman, certainly people in Massachusetts know a lot of Massachusetts superintendents, they probably know more than we do. On the other hand, usually, these jobs are advertised, people know that there are other names. We work all the time with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, which is run by my counterpart, and they do the searches, many of the searches in Massachusetts. There are people going back and forth all the time, and it's true that somebody from outside may know more about outside possible candidates. On the other hand, I would think that the firms in Connecticut know our superintendents very well, and other candidates coming up the line. Good consultants keep an eye on that too. It's not just a question of who's already a sitting superintendent. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Ms. Carnell, followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
Through the chair. You mentioned about staying in the state of Connecticut. I believe you quoted there were three firms, including yours.
That are the big ones.
Okay. The question that I would have, and Mr. Dwyer said about also, from out of state, right now, there seems to be, in the state of Connecticut, a tremendous demand on superintendents in particular, and in particular in our geographic. So to me, staying in the state is going to really limit our pool of candidates. I would think that at a time where maybe there isn't such a demand for superintendents, maybe staying in the state would be advantageous. Traditionally, in doing a search, one candidate can only be represented to one position. Now, that may be different, that may be a board's decision, I don't know. But if one candidate can only be represented at one time, it would be very difficult to have that pool in the state, just choosing from Connecticut.
Well, let me answer what you said first, and then I want to go back to what you were saying at the end, because I'm a little confused. Certainly, or maybe it's me, certainly anybody, just because they're from Connecticut, it doesn't mean they wouldn't look outside. What usually happens, and I was going to get to this, where you advertise, very often you'll do a brochure playing up the community, that's sent out across the country usually, though mostly in Connecticut, I would say. But because of websites, because people know each other, because they make contact with each other, it's very probable that you will get some people from out of state, who might look very good on paper, and they might indeed be very good. It's a question of who's going to vet them and what are you looking for. The other thing is, probably the best place to advertise, and you only have to do it once or twice, thank goodness, because it's very expensive, is in Education Week, which obviously is a weekly publication that just about everybody, I would think all superintendents get, others get across the country. We certainly get it, it's a very fine publication. But everybody knows to look there if you're looking for a position. So just because they're located in Connecticut, doesn't mean you'd only get Connecticut applicants. As a matter of fact, we are linked up to all the other superintendent searchers in the country, who do this for school boards associations. So we have a pretty vast number of people to pull. Now, could you please, what do you mean, you can only have one candidate represented? I didn't understand.
For a living, I vet search firms, so I've been doing this for 30 years. And in the searches that I've worked on and my clients, if I wanted to, if I was recruited and they said, "Okay, Weston is looking for a superintendent, Stanford's looking for a superintendent, Fairfield's looking for a superintendent," I have to make my choice to who I'd want to be presented to. I cannot be presented to all three at the same time. That's how it's traditional in my business, that's why I was asking.
No, I think at some point, you'd have to make a decision, but there's nothing stopping anybody from sending in three applications and seeing how it goes.
I meant through the search firm. Can the search firm represent all three to three different schools at the same time?
Yes, I've seen that happen. It doesn't happen that often, because it doesn't come up that often. It doesn't come up that often, but I have seen where it happens. And, you know, the search firm, the idea of the search firm, as far as we have always seen it, is they're representing the board, they're not representing the outside, you know, candidates. They certainly want to make a good match, but they're not representing, we don't have a stable, we don't, stable is the way it's said, as far as some firms have been known to move people around. They always use the same people. We don't do that, it's open for anybody who wants to apply. I would think at some point, though, if they're applying for three and one's getting pretty close to making a decision, the consultant will say to them, "You're going to have to make a decision here, before you go any further."
Well, I think that, and I appreciate that, I think that's something that should be vetted further. Can one person be representing to three different schools at the same time? The other question I ask, you mentioned a firm that placed Dr. Tidal here, and they are not a Chicago-based, they are a Chicago-based headquarter, they are not a Connecticut firm.
Right.
So I'm not sure why they pushed to stay into Connecticut, that's why I was just curious. Everybody's saying, maybe you're better off looking, using a firm in Connecticut. So I was just curious, because they are not a Connecticut firm.
Right, they're not a Connecticut firm, they have done some work in Stanford and other places across Connecticut. At one point, we were working very closely with them, sort of in a partnership. That doesn't mean they can't find somebody good, you know, some people want to do an intergalactic search, you know, and they want to look at people from across the country. I'm just saying that because of the culture in Connecticut, it's sometimes a better idea to find somebody who is aware of it, has perhaps dealt with the culture, and by that I mean the two sets of boards to some extent, and it might just be easier for the community, and it might work better.
And our conversation, I think, has sometimes talked about somebody from Connecticut when we're referring to potential superintendent candidates, and sometimes someone from Connecticut when we're talking about search firms. So as we continue the conversation, as you make comments, you may want to clarify which one you're commenting about. Are you done? Should I move on to...
Big rack off for a question.
I'm done, yes, please.
Mr. Llewellyn, do you mind if Mr. Patton, Mr. Patton?
So just to clarify what Ms. Carnell was saying, so if you pick search firm X, and let's say, I would assume a search firm wouldn't just have one town they're working with at a time, let's say they're working with at least one other, so would, for example, if they had a pool of candidates and Candidate Jones was a candidate and the search firm is representing Bristol and Fairfield, would the search firm represent that candidate to both towns at the same time?
It's very possible.
Or are they not supposed to do that?
No, there's nothing stopping them from doing it. I've heard, they're not representing, they're not representing the candidates, they're representing the board. And if that, I would assume that if that consultant feels, and this is a great question for a consultant when you come to interview the firms, if they may say, you know, "You would be good for either of those, but I can see you in Bristol rather than Fairfield." And, you know, certainly that's a possibility, the person may withdraw, the person may just see, "Well, let's see how this goes."
So, search firms can work with people who may be applying to two different districts that they represent, they represent the district, not the candidate?
Absolutely.
May I piggyback on off of that?
Please do, Ms. Carnell.
Mr. Llewellyn, take a break. To your point that you said repeatedly, they work for the board because we're the ones that write their check, and that's absolutely correct. But at that point, we can put in our contract that we don't want any candidate represented to multiple districts at the same time. We have the right to put that in a contract.
I guess you can ask the consultants, and certainly that's something they'd have to decide. But again, they're not representing, they may bring forth a candidate, they think is a candidate, a good candidate. I would assume they could do it for two districts. I've heard certainly of somebody who has been, well, not only have they been candidates in two different places, I've also heard of, you know, somebody who's a real good candidate to go to one district, but the current, the current district finds out about that, raises the person's salary, and they decide not to go. So it's not a question of them representing, they might think this would be a good candidate. That's the bottom line.
Right, but for which district, that's my point.
Well, maybe that person is a very good person, a very good candidate for both.
Right.
It's possible, but at some point, they certainly have to make a decision.
To your point, different districts will have different needs, absolutely. So you would look at the qualifications of the candidate.
Absolutely.
Again, my concern is because we have so many searches going on in this geographical area at this present time.
Mr. Llewellyn.
Actually, my question is related in that, how many open searches are there, do you know, in the state of Connecticut right now?
I don't know, it seems to be fewer than in some past years, there's probably about 15, I would think.
15, and do you know how many concluded in the last two years or so? Because I've heard there, anecdotally, there are quite a few that have occurred.
Yeah, in the last few years, but I don't think there is many now taking place.
Right. And would CAPE have access to those numbers?
That information, probably CAPS would. That's the Superintendents Association.
Okay, thank you.
As to what's open and what's not.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did you have other presentation you wanted to make, or are we on the general Q and A at the moment?
I can do Q and A, but yeah, I wanted to finish the chronology at some point.
Well, we do Mrs. Lou McCormick, and then you can finish your process.
Hi.
Hi.
You had mentioned that certain firms seem to have maybe a stronger presence within the state of Connecticut and familiar with the candidates that would be qualified here, whereas perhaps some of the outside firms may have a deeper understanding of some of the outside candidates. Has it ever occurred, or is there anything stopping us from having two advisors, one that represents candidates from the outside of Connecticut and one that focuses within? And the reason I ask that is because with anything, like with financial advisors, it often is very good to have two different sets of advice, to hear two different perspectives.
Yeah, well, let me answer that. What I was talking about at the beginning, the possibility of CAPE working with Hazard Young would give you that. I don't know that you want really two firms kept apart, that you're hearing two different sort of messages. I think you just need to go with one firm or one agreement, like CAPE and Hazard Young. And Hazard Young has some people, I know they have people we've worked with in New York, they're not that, you know, they're not just in Chicago. They do have representatives out here.
In New Jersey.
And Jersey, and...
And San Francisco.
California. It's all on the website.
And maybe you'll all get to do a site visit.
Does that answer your question?
So the answer is, yes, it is possible, but you would suggest going with one to keep it streamlined.
Or with a specific collaborative agreement rather than two different agreements?
Right. Yeah, I wouldn't do two different agreements, I'd do, you know, maybe CAPE with the assistance of Hazard Young.
And so just to be clear, so CAPE's function isn't necessarily as a search firm, but as a side consultant, and then you would separately retain a separate search firm, or would you, CAPE be acting as a search firm?
It is CAPE, it's actually outside consultants which we use. Mary Broderick, who is our former president, former president of the National School Boards Association, is the lead consultant for us now, but she could work with Hazard Young, and they could, as I've seen before, they could possibly make a joint presentation of some kind to you. But I wouldn't have two contracts, and certainly I would want the one in Connecticut to be the leader.
Okay, thank you. You want to continue with comments that you were making?
Sure, sure. So let me get the rest of it done. As far as what else the board will have to think about is how much time. Usually, we say it takes five to six months to do the search. I know Dr. Tidal is going to leave in August, you're available through August?
Last day of July.
Last day of July. So you do have some time, you might be lucky, you might find somebody fairly quickly, but until you get the consultants in place, still, until they do the brochure or whatever they do, till they start doing the, you know, the hearings with different people that I mentioned before, the focus groups, that takes a while. Then you have to get all the paperwork in, see who your candidates are, narrow that down. And very often, you have to remember that at the end, if this is a sitting superintendent, he or she probably has to give three months' notice or so to wherever they are, to the school district wherever they're working. So five to six months is the usual time. If that doesn't work out, and Dr. Tidal does not want to work here and has started his other job, certainly there is the availability of an interim superintendent. They're fairly easy, you know, it's not a process like this. Usually, you'll get one or two or three names. CAPS keeps that list, have them come in. Their salary is always supposed to be based on the prorata amount that the sitting superintendent is now getting, and they don't get fringes. They don't get fringe benefits generally. If they're traveling a long distance, you might decide to give them some kind of a If they're traveling a long distance, you might decide to give them some kind of a travel allowance, but no fringes and the prorata amount is usually what they get. You're going to have to identify what you want in a superintendent. As I was telling you before, you should think very strongly about the future, what kind of information or knowledge or skills that you want that person to have, as will anybody in the focus groups or the members of the public, so you come out with something. You're going to have to decide on a salary range at some point. Usually, if you're, if you find somebody with a lot of the qualifications, you usually end up paying towards the high side of the salary range, just to show good faith and you really want the person. You also should look at the superintendent's job description, make sure it drives with what you have now. You'll also have to look at the contract at some point, because you'll have to sign a new contract with whoever you decide on. You're going to need a budget. I would think that a search will probably, with everything included, cost about $20,000. If you're going to go with an outside firm, it might be somewhat higher than that. It also depends on what you do at the end, as far as who you bring in to be interviewed. There are costs involved with that. As well as if you end up doing site visits, obviously, there would be a cost to that. Usually, you pick three people to do that from the board, as opposed to the whole board going. Have three people and have them come back and report to the board. We talked already about advertising. Again, Education Week is the big place for that, but you might want to prepare a brochure. That's usually done by the consultant. The consultant will also put the ad in Education Week or wherever you decide to have it. You're going to have to decide how many finalists, what you want to see, as far as finalists, as far as paper, what do you want to see from the candidates? You should have the right to everything, but talk it over with your consultants just to make sure you get what you want. Before you actually get to interviews, which is usually when you're down to about 10 first interviews perhaps, you might want to do a mock interview. You know, there are a lot of questions you're not allowed to ask in an interview because they're unlawful, such as nationality, what's that, that accent I hear, even questions like that. Certainly, you don't ask if you're going to bring your family with you, especially to a female. That can be seen as an unlawful question. So you just want to make sure you're asking the right questions, and you're really supposed to ask the same questions to every one of the candidates you bring in. After your interviews, you usually get down to about three. This is where it really gets serious. At that point, working with your consultant, you should decide if, if you want to somehow announce the names. Very often, you'll have three come into the district, meet with various people, get a feel for the district, take them around, let them meet parents or members of the staff, as well as others in the community. But of course, at that time, they have to be ready to have their names public. It's not a question of confidentiality, and it should be the consultant who makes sure that's okay with them. You don't want to embarrass somebody like that story I told you at the beginning. So the board makes the final decision. I would very strongly urge you to work as hard as you can behind the scenes to end up with a nine-nothing decision. The example I give is actually what happened with Dr. Tidal when he went to Bloomfield. They first, I think, were at four to three, and he said, why would I come to a district when one person could be replaced on the board and I could lose my position? You know, you're asking people to change their careers drastically, come to a different district, perhaps a different state. They want some, some kind of security besides the contract that the board isn't going to flip and they'll be out quickly. I don't remember how it ended up with Dr. Tidal, but it was something like a six to one or something like that by the end. I would just suggest you come as close as you can. I know many boards are divided on some issues, but certainly, when it comes to this one, you all ought to get as close as you can to unanimity. Obviously, everybody has their right to vote as they want, but you really want to show the community at the end that you're united and working together. And certainly, that's what I would want when I would come in, if I were to come in for a position like this. Once you settle on one final person, usually, the contract is drawn up by your attorney and the person, there may be some negotiations. And at the end of the process, you obviously want to have some kind of a transition. If Dr. Tidal is still around, it may be helpful to have him spend some time with the, with the new candidate, with the incoming superintendent at that point, just to, to let them know about some of the ropes, some of the obstacles, challenges, that type of thing. And certainly, you'd want to take that person around to the different schools, as well as let them meet the staff, members of the community, maybe of the town council, that type of thing. And we do have a brochure on that when you're ready, ready for that, but that was a little too early to bring you it tonight. So that, in a nutshell, is what you can expect. Again, it's a real opportunity to do something great for the district, to set you on a path for the years that are upcoming, and can really, really help Fairfield, as any other district starting this, to really unite around a real good person who can take you into the future.
So I appreciate that you came down from the middle of the state or wherever you came from, and that I'm sure at some point, you'll want to stay till the very end of the meeting before you go home. Or you may want to go home right after this presentation.
Well, you know...
And so you're welcome to leave at your pleasure.
Because you guys call us at 8:30 in the morning, I will probably leave to go home.
Any other final comments or questions that people have of Mr. Rader? If not, of course, you can always give him a call as he welcomed you. Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I don't know if this is appropriate to ask at this point, but understanding your comment that the Westport superintendent retiring came from New York, and you mentioned the various...
I think he started in Connecticut, actually. I think he started in Ridgefield, didn't he? Do you know Dr. Tidal?
And this is not the current, the newly hired one? This was Elliott when he was hired?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Twenty years ago, so...
Well, what I'm curious about are the different factors that would have made him decide that moving to Connecticut was, in fact, attractive, given all the hurdles that you had mentioned from coming out of state.
Well, first, I would just tell you that I can't comment, and it would be inappropriate to comment specifically on, on Dr. Landen, who's a good friend, who I worked with in three different districts when I was in New York, and somebody who I admire and respect quite a lot. But I'll tell you, coming to Connecticut, the salaries are often higher than other places. It's a great state. We obviously care about education, and there are wonderful people to work with. And, you know, there were some negatives working in New York, you know? New York is really rough and tumble, and, you know, we go to meetings with unions or other people, and since you didn't really develop relationships like you do in a small state like Connecticut, sometimes those meetings were, were much harder than they are in Connecticut, where it's kind of nice to be with a smaller, a smaller number of players involved in education. You get to know them, you get to understand them, and it makes for some real good collaboration. Not always, but a lot of the time.
Okay. Two, the last two? Okay. Did you have your hand up? Mr. Patton, followed by Ms. Cornell.
I know this is, this may also be a question for the consultants, but that was also in your, in your search guide. In general, what role, if any, does any part of the administration, the staff play in the search?
They should certainly be talked to for input, perhaps a focus group, asking the central office staff, you know, what would you be looking for, and so on. But generally, outside of what I talked about with Dr. Tidal, and Dr. Tidal, you weren't here to hear this, but the idea is that, you know, I would certainly talk to Dr. Tidal about things like, what does he see coming up? What challenges? Has the new person got to be aware of? Where does he see the district going? How can you build on the strengths? And whatever weaknesses there might be, how do you, what are you really looking for?
But the paperwork for all of the candidates should be handled by the consultant.
Right, because those people in the central office will be working for these people, and it's not really appropriate for them to get all the information.
Is that it, Mr. Patton? Ms. Cornell?
I just want to thank you for your time and coming down.
Oh, sure, sure. Thank you for being a part of CAE.
Thank you. Safe travels back.
Sure, thank you. Good luck with the rest of the meeting.
Now, we, our next presentation, I think, do have to set up a PowerPoint.
Yep.
So, so we won't necessarily take a recess, we will just take a pause for the TV audience to understand.
Yeah, sliding over. Thank you. If we were going to come back and say that, you know, we didn't see this as a viable option, then we had to have some data to back that up, and, or if it turns out to be a viable option, why it wouldn't work here for other reasons. So they've been working very hard on this project, and so Mike Zubba and Pat Gallagher from Malone McBroom are here, and we're, they have a large presentation that was in your packet. So I'm going to let them go through that, and then they'll take Q and A, and we'll be off to the races. So, Mike, I guess you're starting. Over to you.
Yep, thank you, Dr. Tidal. I don't want to scare everybody with this number of slides that we have on our deck tonight. Some of the stuff we'll pause and talk about, but I know that you got the packet ahead of time. We just asked that you hold all questions in note, whatever question you may have on an individual slide. We may answer it throughout the course of the presentation. If not, we'll reserve time at the end of the presentation to be able to get back to it, to be able to address any of those questions. As part of tonight's meeting, we're going to cover many different topics. We're going to begin with the baseline conditions, and those are the enrollment projections for the, under the existing configuration for the schools, as well as the facility utilization. We want to get a good understanding over the next 10 years, just exactly where the demographics are going for the individual elementary schools, as well as some of the drivers for space utilization throughout. The other key parts are three viable options, which we are presenting tonight, but I think what's equally important is not only the three viable options, but we're also going to present three of the options that we looked at that didn't work, and we'll have some discussion on just why those options did not work. As Dr. Tidal mentioned, back in the fall, we began this process. School redistricting enrollment projections and racial balance plans are something that our firm of Malone McBroom has been doing for the last 15 years throughout the state of Connecticut. Ninety-five percent of our school facility planning work is within the state of Connecticut, and to further break that down, a bulk of our clients are in this area in Fairfield County. In the last three years, we've worked on school redistricting plans for Greenwich, as well as Trumbull, and, as well as Milford, Connecticut. We do annual enrollment projections, as well as facility utilization for numerous schools throughout the area. Darien, Wilton, Ridgefield, as well as Newtown have been some of our recent clients. To start us off for tonight's presentation, we're just going to pause for a second. As part of the process, we've developed GIS boundaries, and these go back to not only what your past redistricting efforts were, but they align with all of your address lists and really the elementary attendance zones for the school system. This is really the building blocks for what we're getting into tonight. We've collected demographic, housing, economic data that then feed into our enrollment projections for each of these individual geographies throughout the town of Fairfield. So as we begin presenting this, this is a graphic-heavy presentation, realizing going back to what the existing districts look like. Our starting point for all of our enrollment data, and I think this is key to pause here for a second, is we don't utilize the, or we don't use the enrollment of the students that are in the system in, you know, today, or even back in December. All of our work is predicated on who was in the seats on October 1st. That is the official data that gets reported to the State Department of Education, and ultimately, the source of information that is driving the racial imbalance notification that Fairfield Public Schools gets every spring. So when they look at that, and when they generate that calculation, and we'll touch on it in a minute, it's merely based off of a snapshot in time, which is October 1 of every year, of exactly what the total enrollment for the entire public school is in, and what the composition of those individual schools, as well as the district, is at that point in time. I don't know how well aware you may be of Connecticut's racial balance law, but it is a law that dates back to the 1960s. They did not begin enforcing it till the 1980s during a point in time where they gathered a bunch of superintendents together, and they came up with this sort of arbitrary number of, you know, what is an imbalance? Because up until that point in time, they just had a law on the books, but there was really no measurable or, or metrics to it. So at the time, they said, well, if a district has a school that has absolute imbalance of, or deviation of 25%, either high or low, from the district-wide average, we're going to call and, and we're going to send them a letter and have cause for action to develop a plan to remedy that, because in the, in the general statutes, that is now an imbalance situation. If you have an individual school within those like grade groupings that is either higher or lower by 15%, they basically put a district on notice for impending balance. No action is required. You will be notified of it, but you are not obligated to draft a plan for the state. You're only obligated to draft and implement the plan for the state if your imbalance is greater than 25%. Taking a look just over the last few years, we wanted to just capture a snapshot, and the highlighted columns in red indicate where McKinley has an absolute imbalance of greater than 25% as the percentage points indicated in the smaller box below, but the sand color indicates where you have an impending balance. I think what's important to note on this slide is that over the last four years, the district has increased diversity by about 2% or 1.7%, whereas McKinley School District and those attendance zones within there have grown by four and a half percent. And that growth has been, in spite of having continued efforts, where you allow students to be able to opt in to, to other schools to act pre-K in the hopes that they stay to help, help decrease the minority composition there, increase elsewhere, in order to get under that, yeah, to make it better, to get under that, to get under that 25% mandate. However, you know, there has been improvement to date, however, it hasn't been enough where you're able to get back to that impending balance, which is really not actionable by the plan itself. What you're going to hear a lot about are projections, and we're not only doing projections to see where you're at today, but for each of the options and scenarios that we've gone through as part of the redistricting plan, we want to be able to test the long-term viability of those, not only from a state, from a space standpoint for utilization, but also realizing that, you know, there also is some facility planning going on for Holland Hill and Mill Hill for building expansions, to see how it ties into those two separate construction processes. So what we rely on is the cohort survival. It's the accepted methodology by the state. It's the methodology that's required if you're going to submit a construction grant application for any school project, if you want to have any sort of grant reimbursement on the state's end, and it works really well. It's probably the only known methodology to produce grade-level-specific data, as well as school-specific and grade-level-specific for individual elementary schools or middle schools. One thing I'd like to note is that even though we're in an improving economy, the recent stability when we went through the Great Recession made it very difficult to project enrollments because things are happening and things are changing. This methodology always works really well when you're either growing at a steady rate, shrinking at a steady rate, or being flat. And ever since the economic downturn, you have to begin modifying the cohort survival. And that's one of the areas of specialty that we have, and we've seen some trends throughout Fairfield County that we'll touch on in a little bit. We always go back to this term persistency ratio, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but it is a key driver, and especially, it's a key driver for determining kindergarten, the birth decay. The birth decay is always the big number of being able to get that right. If you get that right, you have your year-to-year annual projections are typically correct, as well as your individual school projections. What gets informed into all those persistency ratios is when we begin looking at other building blocks of our data, as well as some of our key critical assumptions. So what we do is we collect data such as housing sales, housing permit starts, looking at any activity in the town, as well as collecting birth data from the State Department of Public Health. We do things a little differently, especially when we do redistricting and utilization studies, is that rather than... studies, is that rather than just using the total number of births that can be obtained from either the town clerk or the Department of Public Health, we actually get births by address, which gives us pretty accurate results for individual schools. So five years ago, we'll know the number of births that are in one of your individual elementary schools and be able to then apply those persistency ratios to project the number of kindergarteners today. Feeding into that is our, looking at the unemployment rate of the town, the unemployment rate of the region, as well as other population projections that have been done, and females of childbearing age, as well as other key demographic indices. All of those get folded together in our enrollment projection model, where we can then begin projecting enrollments out 10 years, which is really necessary for a redistricting study like this. What you're going to see in our projections later on is that we're showing a dip in those elementary school projections, and I'd just like to pause here for a minute on that dip. What we rely heavily on is the birth data. There is a good correlation in Fairfield between birth-to-k five years later, and you'll see as we begin looking out to our most recent years of birth data, that there has been a drop-off from where you were even back in the mid-2000s for births. But what we're seeing in 2014, which is still a preliminary number and will most likely go upwards when it becomes finalized, is that we're getting back to about 560 or so births. So with the improving economy, and with the improving unemployment rate, and the improvement in the housing sales, we're seeing that number move forward. One of the areas of uncertainty in looking at your enrollment projections here is that your birth-to-k this past year had an anomalous jump. So last year and the year before, you were about 1.2 and 1.7, so for every 100 births you had five years ago, you returned 120 and 117 kindergarteners respectively. This past year, it's 126. So that jump of nine percentage points bears watching. It may go back down, but if it goes back up, we're going to see a trend that we've seen in some other communities in Fairfield County, where there's been a rising birth-to-k. So as the birth rate went down, or as the total births went down, birth-to-k has gone up with immigration of zero and four-year-olds into the community. So basically, families that have children that weren't born here, but moved in with young children in tow, or began entering the system. So that number bears watching over next year's projections to see if that birth-to-k is closer to the 1.26, or if it falls back down to where you had that historic average of just below 1.2. So what we have here is our enrollment projections. This allows us to begin testing some of our utilization and capacity numbers. I'm not going to go through each one, I'm sure you've had a chance to review it, but what we're seeing for just the K to 5 enrollment, as those smaller births begin turning into kindergarten classes, we're seeing a dip, and that dip is also driven by having larger fifth, fourth, and fifth grade classes matriculating up into the middle school. So you're losing some larger class sizes and replacing them with smaller. However, when those birth numbers begin climbing back up to that 560, 580, we're going to see the kindergarten class sizes go back up in a slow building over the next decade, where we're filling back into a level of where you're much closer to today. So when you look at it from a facility standpoint, whether you're going through construction or going through redistricting, it's always much easier to go through change when you have fewer students in the system. It's less of a general disruption. So the baseline for all of our utilization, that Pat will touch on in a little bit, is our individual school projections. The individual school projections are tied to the district-wide projections, in that we use that to normalize them, to ensure that, you know, they all add up to no more than the district-wide average. But we're seeing some different trends throughout some of the different elementary schools, and those really show themselves as we begin looking at them, as they relate to the individual building capacities themselves.
Right. So I'm going to touch a little bit on our school capacities, and then go into our utilization analysis. The table here shows the functional capacity of each school, both with portables and without portables. Currently, we have Holland Hill and Mill Hill, both with portable classrooms, and you can see how that impacts the utilization. Both Holland Hill and Mill Hill are overcrowded with a utilization over 100% with portables, and with those portables removed, you can see that it's even higher. Another thing I'd just like to note, because we'll be touching on it when we look at our scenarios later, is Roger Sherman. We also have over 100% capacity, and currently does not have any portable classrooms, so it is the same with and without portables. So we applied our facility and our functional capacities to calculate facility utilization for our projection horizon. And I'd just like to call out in orange here, we were notified that Holland Hill will have two additional portable classrooms added next school year, so we have added that capacity. And so you can see the dramatic drop from 107 down to around 97, and that's not caused by a decline in students, but rather an added two classrooms to its functional capacity. And if we look down at the lower table, which shows utilization without portable classrooms, really, I think sheds some light on the whole concept of, can we remove the portables without any of the building projects? And I think what this graphic does a good job of showing is, that would be very challenging to do, especially given the targeted utilization of 90% as one of the guiding criteria that we are striving for. As you can see, right now, we are at about 93% utilization district-wide without portable classrooms, and while we're projected to see a dip as those smaller kindergarten classes enter the system, we expect utilization to increase back up into the low to mid-90s as the larger birth cohorts start entering towards the end of the projections.
Thanks, Pat. Before we begin going through the redistricting plan and process, we had to be able to set some goals, as well as some guiding principles and parameters, basically our roadmap for how we're going to go through and conduct the redistricting itself, but how we're going to begin weighing our options, what is going to help us guide as we begin making judgment calls and move some of the attendance zones around. We know that one of our main goals is really to reduce McKinley's racial balance to below 20%. In an ideal world, you would want to say that we're going to get it below 15% to be able to remove it from even the list of impending, but that was not an attainable goal once we really got into the process of looking at where the districts are, where the students are, and what the capacity is around it. So we set the goal of 20%, which we found to be rather challenging, and our options A, B, and C have been removed from consideration because we weren't able to attain that goal. We know the Redistricting Committee, I met with them early on in the fall, they had done some work throughout the fall and in November, they provided us with guiding principles, and we followed those guiding principles and used those as criteria to help us when we were drafting different options, and to weigh one option against each other. Of those I'll mention is that the strive for 90% utilization, as Pat mentioned, we're currently at about 93% overall. We have some disparity between some of the schools, however, that is a hard number to be able to meet that mark at each individual school throughout the 10-year horizon, but it gave us really something to shoot for. Adhere to the neighborhood and natural boundaries, that's something we took to heart, and we really tried to be able to ensure that we had contiguous blocks of students. I know, under any redistricting, which is an involuntary movement, it's always tough to be able to make those judgment calls, but we look at it from the standpoint of not only transportation, busing, walkers, but where some logical boundaries should be. But with all that being said, there's still the, there's still the goal of being able to reduce that overall number to 20%, which makes it tricky to be able to achieve every one of those principles in any redistricting plan. Scenarios A, B, and C, what we wanted to test with these scenarios were sort of our no-build. We know you're currently weighing the options for building additions at Holland Hill and Mill Hill. What we wanted to do here was to take a look at if we're able to go through a redistricting process, and these would be a comprehensive redistricting. Can we develop boundaries that would either facilitate removing of portable classrooms so that the building projects, you know, would not go forward, or maybe could be put off? Or looking at the option of being able to keep and have long-term balance at McKinley. So when we began looking at those criteria and began developing options, we determined that that wasn't likely possible. You'll notice on this map that we have numerous white little call-out boxes. Each one of those on each of the three maps indicates the number of students or number of chunks of neighborhoods that we would have to impact and move. One of the challenges to this option under the no-build was when you have very little capacity at the neighboring Holland Hill, we weren't able to have a true succession of movement of students. The domino effect really came into play here, where we were doing many small incremental moves across the district in order to get any impact, and what we realized in the end was that, you know, we've developed three different sets of options that had different moving parts in each one, and that we weren't able to achieve our 90% utilization. In some cases, we actually were well over 100% utilization, and that we weren't able to come anywhere close to our goal of 20%, where the district is at 27% right now for McKinley. So we looked at a reasonable target for long-term sustainable racial balance as about 20%. And in some cases, we were about 24% or 22%. Nothing that would warrant the upheaval of many families in the community when you don't have something that is truly sustaining in itself. So we went ahead and we eliminated those three options and came to the conclusion that there will need to be some infusion of space in the district, especially at Holland Hill, in order to be able to facilitate any sort of redistricting for racial balance purposes at McKinley, as well as to be able to help provide some relief and to attain that target 90% utilization at the school facilities.
All right, so now we'll walk through Scenario D, which is predicated on the Holland Hill Construction and Expansion Project moving forward, and Holland Hill becoming a 504-student school. This is a pocket redistricting scenario, and so we tried to minimize any impacts on schools other than Holland Hill, McKinley, and, in this case, Stratfield. And we also assumed that current opt-in and open-choice students and special ed students would remain at their current schools. And this also does not impact Mill Hill, because it's so targeted towards McKinley, and so we have left the portable classrooms at Mill Hill when we get into our utilization tables a little later. So as you can see on the conceptual boundaries map, we have three areas which were moved in this scenario. We have students moving from McKinley to Holland Hill. This is an area of McKinley that has a high minority composition, and so the idea was we could move them to Holland Hill, and then move an area with a lower minority composition from Holland Hill into McKinley, to kind of balance out the enrollment and lower the minority composition at McKinley. And to get closer to that 20% mark, we also added some students to McKinley from the Stratfield District in the areas bordering McKinley District. So for starters, I'll just kind of explain our format going forward, where we're going to be having a series of charts, and I just want to point out that all of these are as if the scenario boundaries were in place today. So it's a kind of a look back to see, if these were in place today, how would they look? How would racial balance numbers, how would utilization, how would all of these numbers work? So you will notice that these numbers don't look like anything that gets reported to the state, and that's because they are, they're based on these conceptual boundaries that don't exist in reality. Couple things to note here, this scenario got McKinley down close to around 20%, but the movement of students from McKinley into Holland Hill put Holland Hill at impending, so between 15 and 25%, which requires no action, but will be notified by the State Department of Education. This also helps solve the utilization issues at Holland Hill, simply because we added several classrooms with the 504-student school. But you will notice that Mill Hill and Roger Sherman, utilization was not impacted because we did not touch those schools. We also took a look back four years to see if these boundaries were in place, how would our minority composition look? We didn't want to create boundaries that were effective just for one year at getting McKinley out of racial imbalance. So we took a look back, and in this case, McKinley would be between 19 and 22% in the four-year period, and Holland Hill would be between 16 and 18%. So still, McKinley, very close to that 20%, but not under, so there's still some concerns about, you know, potentially getting back to that imbalance level if a large minority composition in a kindergarten class were to appear, for example. We also performed projections for each scenario, and we'll go through the projections and utilization. And this is a what-if, these districts were in place, how would the projections look? We reallocated our students and reallocated our births to these new district boundaries, and fed that into the projections. And I'll just call out again the Mill Hill and Roger Sherman down here at the bottom. While we solved the utilization issues at Holland Hill, the Roger Sherman and Mill Hill issues will persist.
Overall, when we begin looking at the considerations, as Pat mentioned, we did not touch any other parts of town, there was only those discrete areas for the pocket redistricting. All in all, we've only touched on about 170 students, or 4.6% of your K4 students. In everyone, we assume the fifth grade moves on to sixth grade, and when we look at the long-term implications of this, I think what's important is that this does not mean that you would have to end the program now with McKinley students, that they would continue to opt-in, and that would continue to help providing a relief valve. When you begin looking at demographics, especially small groups of demographics, when you look at the minority population in town, projecting that going forward is very challenging, especially projecting it going forward for such a small number of students is kind of fraught with errors. So what we do is, as Pat mentioned, is a look back gives us a good idea of what's going to move on forward, and we know the district has been changing faster overall, or the McKinley School's been changing faster overall at the district, so that becomes sort of cause for concern when you begin wrapping the plan up, and you want to ensure that you have that relief valve through the opt-in program. When we look at Holland Hill in itself, and now we've put it into that impending balance, but the last few years, when you look into the numbers, Holland Hill was just right below that impending balance of about 12, 13% over the last four years. So that slight increase now has put it into that category of no action, but you're now on the list. When we look at the available options that we have, the most logical move in almost all of the redistricting scenarios involves that juxtaposition with the movement of students between McKinley and Holland Hill. So we're going to keep seeing that come up throughout all of our options, and we've mentioned in this option itself is that it is going to increase the utilization at Fairfield Woods a little later on. In the PowerPoint presentation, we're going to touch on what that means for the feeder patterns for the middle school, as well as the, as well as the high school.
Okay, so now we'll go into our scenarios E and F, and these scenarios, we're assuming that both the Holland Hill and Mill Hill construction projects move forward, and both schools become 400, or 504-student schools. This would allow portable classrooms to be removed at both schools, but also would require comprehensive redistricting to get students into the seats. So for example, at Mill Hill, there'll be a lot more available seats to move kids, for example, from Roger Sherman, to help alleviate overcrowding at Roger Sherman, so that's something you'll see in Scenario E and F. And the added seats from the additional construction project made that 90% utilization target a lot more attainable. It gave us some flexibility in terms of moving students around to actually achieve close to 90% at all schools, which we weren't able to do with just the Holland Hill Construction But unfortunately, the trade-off with this scenario is that it involves a much larger movement of students than we showed you with Scenario D. The white call-outs show areas of change from your current district, and they're, in order to get that 90% utilization, it requires more targeted and small movement of students from schools that are higher in capacity to schools that are lower in capacity. And so the domino effect that Mike talked about a little bit earlier really comes into play, where, you know, if you move students from one school to the other, that might put the other school close to 100%, so then you have to move students again. And the domino effect often takes place in these comprehensive redistricting scenarios, so one of the trade-offs. Taking a look at our racial balance as if these districts were in place, McKinley does get below the 20%, so we would be at about 19% if these boundaries were in place today, and Holland Hill would not be impending. However, if we look back four years, that's not the case, and I'll get to that shortly after I touch on utilization. One thing you'll note here is that we have fairly balanced utilization across all of our schools. On the high end, we have 93.7% at Dwight, and on the low end, we have just under 80% at Jennings. So these numbers could get closer to 90, but again, it would involve, you know, movements of small numbers of students, and so always the trade-off with finding the utilization balance with the movement of students. So while Holland Hill was not impending imbalanced if the districts were in place this year, if we take a look back, it would have been imbalanced three out of the last four years, although it would have been over by just a percentage point and would not require any action. And Holland Hill, or McKinley, excuse me, would be just around 20%, and actually even lower than that, getting down to 17, 18% in 2012, 2013. Again, we reallocated our students based on the new boundaries, and reran our projections and our utilization. and our utilization. One thing that kind of stuck out for us on this scenario was that we don't have any projected schools over 100% capacity on that low table. So, the movement of students is significant, but we felt that unless there was a significant movement of students, that 90% utilization balance across all schools would be difficult to achieve. So, that's one of the kind of the trade-offs that we learned throughout the process, is this balance between moving the fewest number of students possible and creating utilization balance. These things often compete with each other, and unfortunately, not easy to have both at the same time.
When you go from the pocket redistricting to the more comprehensive redistricting, with even being very cognizant of the number of students that were impacting, the number jumped from about 5% to 15%, so we're looking at three times as many K-4 students would become impacted. And I think one of the key things here is the balance. When we began looking at some natural boundaries, some logical areas to draw dividing lines, and Sherman is a good example in that, you know, we picked out Reef Road there where it's a very densely populated area, smaller lots, there are a lot of students coming out of there. You begin looking at the moving, impacting many more students and trying to fine-tune that utilization number, because in the back half of our projections, we had the utilization at Sherman moving all the way up to the mid-to-high 90s based on our projections. If that was earlier in the horizon, typically our first five years is where we have our greatest confidence, then we would have probably handled it a little differently. But since it was in the back half of our projection horizon, we opted to just leave it as-is and let it ride out because we did not want to have such a massive disruption in any one given area. As Pat mentioned, under this plan, we feel we have a sustainable balance for McKinley at that 20% target with the max just going slightly over that. And even though Holland Hill would be in that impending category, but at 15 and 1/2, 16%, we don't see any risk of that ever getting to the imbalance level, at least in the foreseeable future. So, even though it bumped two percentage points or two and a half percentage points up in getting in the impending category, we don't think that is a serious issue going forward for the long-term for Scenario E.
And our last scenario is Scenario F, and this is based on the same assumptions as E with both the Mill Hill and the Holland Hill construction projects going forward. And you'll notice even more white callouts on this one. And so, this one had the best racial and utilization balance, but it came at the expense of the movement of students. So, this scenario had the largest movement of students, but also performed well in some of the other metrics. So, again, we're kind of grappling with the conflicting goals here.
Yeah. And Pat, if we could pause here for one second, too. I think, you know, as when we talk about conceptual boundaries, and especially conceptual boundaries that are really predicated on having successful school construction projects occurring, we know that these are roughly some areas that we would consider. However, when you begin looking at what, when the likely point in time of having two renovations fully designed, completed, and operating back again as status quo, so to speak, we know it's a number of years down the road. What we would recommend would be in something like a scenario like this is that, you know, don't be wed to the exact boundaries in each of the individual areas. It's just a mechanism of whether or not this is a good test fit, is it a viable option, and what are the implications of it, that some of these areas may change based on some tweaks and changing demographics a number of years from now.
Thanks, Mike. So, getting back to our numbers here, this scenario had the best utilization of all of our scenarios. So, here, we only have one school, in this case Dwight, over 90% utilization, and even that at 91%. So, all schools well within that comfort range, and as well as in terms of racial balance, we have McKinley under 20%, and Holland Hill is not impending imbalanced. And if we take a look back at the previous four years, Holland Hill would not have been impending imbalanced any of the previous four years, and McKinley sits well within the 20% range. So, we saw this as succeeding in the racial balance category. In all of the scenarios, we see a one-year spike in 2014, 15, and that kind of mirrors the one-year spike based on the current boundaries, where we saw a graduating class with lower minority composition leave and a kindergarten class replacing it with a much higher minority composition. So, we'll sometimes see these one-year jumps and then dips, which are caused by the incoming and outgoing classes, which is why we like to leave the wiggle room in our goal of 20%. We feel that the 20% has that flexibility where if there is a diverse kindergarten class coming in, you're not going to move up into the impending imbalance. You'll be able to stay within the 25% threshold. This scenario had the best utilization. We don't see any schools over the 100% utilization mark in our tables, and we also see Roger Sherman, which approached 100% in Scenario E, at a little bit lower, around 97%. And by the horizon year, you know, every school is projected to be under 100%, although there are some schools that will be lower utilized than others. So, again, as Mike said, kind of the evolving process of this and making tweaks, you know, if this comes to fruition eight years from now, updating and kind of making the modifications is necessary to reflect the changing demographics to make these closer to that 90% goal.
Overall, this scenario had the greatest movement of students for all the scenarios under the build assumptions of Holland Hill and Mill Hill. 773 K-4 students. As Pat mentioned, we have a much better complement of schools hitting that 90% target utilization. Under this scenario, Holland Hill was not impending balanced in any of the last four years. So, when we look at our criteria of solving McKinley, we didn't just put the burden, or potentially put the burden on Holland Hill. Under this one, we were able to keep it below that key threshold, even though in Scenario E and D, it was only slightly above. This is a viable option. However, it is a very disruptive option when you compare it to, say, Option D. And what we've provided is just a little side-by-side comparison for those at home and for the board. As we've discussed as part of our wrap-up is that, looking at Scenarios A, B, and C, we weren't able to meet our objectives with those, and we really suffered from sort of the domino effect of lack of some centrally located space. So, we had many, many small moves along the way. Scenario D was the only pocket redistricting we had looked at. Scenario E and F were more comprehensive redistricting. One of the questions that, or one of the things that we had discussed internally as we were working through this is whether or not if you were to go through and do the expansion of Holland Hill and then Mill Hill, if, you know, we would be able to satisfy all those requirements in just doing two pocket redistrictings, one similar to D for the Mill Hill-Roger Sherman area. And, you know, that's something that, you know, we didn't get into at this time, but it could potentially be a possibility that may work. Obviously, not going to get the global impact across all the schools of being able to level the utilization across the board at 90% in a long-term, sustainable fashion, but something worthwhile to bring up and consider. What we've put together, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, is just our three viable options, just the number of students that could potentially be impacted, as well as a wrap-up of what it means from the district racial balance plan, that component, as well as the overall utilization, looking at a 90% and then a 100% benchmark across the board for the 10-year horizon, as well as getting all portables offline. One of the key pieces and came from the Redistricting Committee was, well, what is the impact on the feeder pattern? I'm going to pass it over to Pat, and he's going to walk us through not only the feeder pattern, but what we're projecting going forward for capacity there.
Sure. So, one of our other tests for our projections was to see if any of the scenarios would impact utilization at the middle schools. And what we decided to do was to not change the feeder schools, but to use the new boundaries from each scenario to become the new feeder boundaries. So, for example, at Fairfield Woods, Holland Hill would still go to Fairfield Woods, but for each scenario, it would be the Holland Hill District from that scenario. So, it would be the Holland Hill District in Scenario D feeding into Fairfield Woods in Scenario D, and likewise for the other schools. We have two sets of numbers here. The one on the left is today. If we were to move middle school students to align with these new geographies, what would utilization look like? And as well as five years from now, one of the things that we see with the district projections is that five years, and between five and 10 years from now, the smaller birth years that are starting to enter kindergarten now will be matriculating into middle school. And so, the dip that we're going to see in elementary schools is going to happen in the middle schools after that and in the high schools even later. And looking at our utilization, we do not see any major impacts in terms of disrupting the feeder pattern capacities. In five years from now, the only overutilization we have is at Fairfield Woods for Scenario D, and based on the existing districts, it would be about two percentage points higher. And the other scenarios were actually more balanced than today. We did the same for our high school impacts, where we used the same feeder schools, but based these on the new geographies. And we had to assign middle school students to their elementary districts because Fairfield Woods, I believe it's Fairfield Woods, is split. And we have Jennings and North Stratfield going to Fairfield Ward, and Holland Hill and Osborne Hill going to Ludlow. So, we allocated those based on their district of residence and fed that into the high school feeder pattern, the similar way that we did with the middle schools. While the middle school projections saw a dip in the 2021 year, we didn't see that dip at the high school level because the students from the low birth years would still be in middle school. And so, we don't see utilization drop below 100%. And as a result, we see overutilization to continue at the high schools as it does today, ranging anywhere from 102% to 112%, with Scenario E being the one option where there was significant difference between Fairfield, Ludlow, and Fairfield Ward, with Fairfield Ward being more overcrowded.
Thanks, Pat. To wrap up the prior 41 slides, looking at options A, B, and C, having gone through many redistricting plans and knowing what fatigue takes in a community and the tough decisions it puts on not only the board, parents, administrators, looking at having really truly sustainable racial balance at McKinley, we didn't see any of these as a viable option without having some sort of infusion in space, especially infusion of permanent space at Holland Hill. So, we've removed those from consideration. We see Scenario D having potential. It's, and in all of these scenarios, you can't check the box and saying this exceeds our criteria on every one of these. There's pros and cons to each one, and obviously, the biggest con is the amount of disruption. With this one, when you compare it to Scenario E and F, which are the other two viable, one of the pros was it did have disruption, but it was more minimized compared to a comprehensive redistricting. However, it did create an imbalance, a pending imbalance at Holland Hill, however, only at around 15% with the high side at 18%. We didn't feel that that was any real threat to have a permanent imbalance where you would be drafting a racial balance plan for Holland Hill, you know, in the foreseeable future. Scenarios E and F, those are predicated on successful school construction projects and the time it takes to be able to go through those separate processes, as well as being able to have a complete comprehensive redistricting overall. We think that that, the comprehensive redistricting, if you truly are wed to that 90% across the board of all schools, that would be a necessary step. One of the things it did give, it did allow for McKinley to have a much lower percentage of racial imbalance overall, greater, much closer to the district-wide average. Holland Hill never was in the impending category. However, under our conceptual boundaries and using today's students, we had to redistrict almost 1/5 of your, or just over 1/5 of your K-4 student population, which is a pretty considerable disruption overall for any school system to go through. So, you know, there are some major cons to it when you begin looking at being able to achieve this long-term racial balance, as well as being able to have equitable utilization across each and every one of the schools. So, when we begin saying, you know, what are our takeaways and what are the next steps, these are the key considerations as you look at these options that, you know, we look for the board to have some feedback and discussion on now that we wrap up the formal part of our presentation. Sorry, am I blinding? If I knew how to turn it off, I would turn it off.
So, first, Dr. Tittle, do you wish to make any wrap-up comments before we go to board discussion?
I'll say that for two folks who just landed here and started working on this, that they've really got a feel for all the nuances to the feeder patterns that we have and put a lot of time and effort into this, which does show the state that we're making a good faith effort to examine this option, even if it's never sees the light of day. So, I just want to thank Mike and Pat for their thoroughness with this and being willing to examine a lot of options. But I think I'd like to have the board ask questions, and when we get into next steps and options from there, I can jump back in if there's questions for me.
Ms. Pitkow, followed by Mr. Patton.
Through to the chair to Mike and Pat. First, I want to say thank you. That was amazing. I've been analyzing your statistics for the last couple of days, and the presentation you gave was phenomenal. My question is, our town has a certain percentage of affordable housing they need now to implement, and I want to know if that was projected into your statistics because it affects a lot of the I-95 metro north corridors, McKinley, Holland Hill, Sherman.
Yeah, I'll chime in on that. I know where you guys stand in that you're not meeting the state's goal of affordable housing for your individual community. As city planners, as well as demographers that do school facility planning, looking at a 10-year horizon, you're never going to meet that state goal in 10 years. You're probably, I mean, looking at the number of housing units you have in your community, you're probably never going to meet the state goal overall, just based on the fact that you're a largely built-out community. We do see growth there. Those growths are going to be driven in those districts that have the higher-density housing. Some of that's reflected in here. But when we begin looking at the individual projects that are either, you know, applications or pending, or even dreams and discussions, especially around transit and around the 95 corridor, the number of students typically generated out of what we're seeing is pretty low when you look at the bedroom splits that you're actually approving and allowing in the community. We didn't go through the arduous process of tracking each permit here in Fairfield, but we recently did that in Norwalk as part of a major school feasibility assessment there. And what we're finding is the newer TOD-style Transit Orient Development and Higher Density Housing associated with it, we're seeing not a heck of a lot of students being generated. It's geared towards more young professionals and the small component that is for affordable housing. You're looking at minimal number of two or three bedrooms there, what really are the student generators. So, I don't see that being a tremendous driver here going forward for enrollment, especially in some of the districts that are fed by those areas.
I just have one more thing to add to that.
Please do.
I live in the McKinley neighborhood, and I can tell you that a lot of the homes that are near the metro north-centered, single-family homes are zoned for three and four families. So, as the homes get purchased, they're now putting in condos. And I just want to know if that was factored in before we make any decisions.
We didn't get to that individual level of specificity on what tear downs may or may happen. It's speculative at best on our part if we were to be able to get in it. But we do recognize that it's happening, and we do try to account for it within our projection model. But to go on an individual basis and be able to try to project where we're going to see this turnover and then assemblage and then higher density is almost impossible to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Patton.
Through to the chair to our consultants. First, let me just say that the wealth of information that's in here that I poured through over the last couple of days, I think this will be incredibly invaluable to the district over the next six or seven years, regardless of what plans are chosen. So, first question is, overall, especially the DEF plans, they all seem to take into consideration consideration the notion of 2016, 17, and what those numbers will be and building allocations and whatnot and enrollment. But obviously, you guys understand that the construction on both those projects, Mill Hill and Holland Hill, won't take place for several years. So how, you know, pick a project, you know, Mill Hill will at the earliest be done in the 18, 19 year when it's complete, and then Mill Hill will follow that. So how does that affect?
You said Mill Hill for both scenarios.
I'm sorry.
You meant Holland Hill.
Holland Hill first and then Mill Hill.
Correct.
Right.
Yes. The tricky part about trying to, it's tricky to project students five years out in the future. And the hard part about a redistricting is that we have to actually know where the students are on an individual parcel-by-parcel basis, which we only know that from this year's October 1st enrollment, as well as the October 1st enrollment from past years. So even though we can pretty accurately project how many students we're going to have in a given district in five years from now, we don't know what lots they're going to be assigned to or where they're actually going to be within that attendance zone. So we could never be able to generate boundaries for it because students will move on, they'll be replaced through immigration of other students and families moving into the district. So we'll know the total we have, but we won't know where the individual geographies will be, just typical student-generating neighborhoods. So it would be impossible for us to begin and say, or it would be impossible for us to do something that we would be able to stand by and have any accuracy in if we were to just solely say, okay, here's what it'll look like in 2020, 21, when maybe a school construction project would be complete. Because that's already getting five years out in our projections, which as you go further out in projections, you begin losing that inherent level of confidence.
Certainly. But I guess my point is, your projections and your scenarios are for next fall, assuming a construction like Holland Hill that won't exist during that year.
Yep.
So was there a model that you, even, you know, obviously, you know, I wouldn't say hypothetical, but you know, a model that you tried to create using, again, like that 18, 19 kind of year with Plan D to see, does that change at all?
So if you were to, I guess, look at it from a, like a building plan, you would use the existing districts enrollment projections, I guess, up until 2018, 19, from that earlier chart. And then after the construction project, so like years 2018, 19, and beyond, using any of the Scenario Year projections. We have to use the previous years, so for example, 2016, 2017, because it impacts our persistency ratios for the new districts. So for example, you know, the fourth grade to fifth grade transition might be different for the new Holland Hill than it would be for the current Holland Hill. And so understanding kind of the nuances of student movement and persistency ratios within the new district is important for the years, you know, well before a building project actually takes place because it helps us, it feeds our projections, if that helps explain it at all.
I guess I'm still a bit, I wouldn't say worried or nervous, but you know, if we're presenting a plan to the state, again, do you just say Plan D? Because we know we've approved Ed specs for Holland Hill, so we know that the ball is rolling on that project. So we're, you know, let's say 85, 90% sure that's going to happen, but it's not happening until 18, 19. Well, you know, does that, does what you have projected for the 16, 17 year change for the reality of what would be?
Yeah, we know we're going to have slightly less students in the elementary school system in, you know, 17, 18, 18, 19, 19, 20, because we have the dip, we know the births, we've done the projections on it. So for our standpoint too, but we also know there's going to be a rebound. So when we begin looking at that, we know if our most accurate data is the students in the seats and the students in a home in the district today, this is our most accurate look ahead. So we get a good confidence if it works today, most likely it's going to work in the future. But what we really advise to do is to, you know, as you get closer to that date, school's construction is moving forward, you begin taking another revisit of it. This is the same question that we deal with when we do school projections for school construction projects. So the state requires that if you're building a new, you know, high school, say, or, and when you put the grant application in June, they say, well, you need eight years of projections starting in the October after the grant application goes in, even though construction may not start for four years. So how do you know that, you know, in 10 years after the school construction that we're going to be okay with space? Well, I mean, the state doesn't require, we don't know that so far in the future. All you can use is the best demographics and ancillary data that you have today to make that decision and guide that. You know, it's so funny because you have a community saying, we're investing $50 million into school and we're beginning the school projections, you know, when we actually have kids in seats and we're projecting only eight years. But it's what, you know, it's what the state model requires and it's kind of the model that we follow for this as well, because really it is the best data that we have.
Well, that's why we hired the experts here. Can I ask one more question?
Did you have a follow-up on that same subject? Do you mind if?
Well, just through the chair to Mr. Patton. I think part of what you're asking about, if I'm hearing you correctly, is actually would not be a matter for them, it'd be a matter of how we present the plan to the state. So that if we said to the state, we are eventually going to pursue Option F, but it won't be an option for us for this many years. I mean, that's kind of not in their realm. That's part of our communication with the state. So the fact that we know that this isn't feasible right now, it, that's sort of irrelevant. It would just be part of the plan that we present.
Right, understood.
So the fact that it can't happen now isn't an issue that we need to worry about.
I was just more concerned or wondering if they did, you know, the similar, what they did with the similar model to that, you know, two, three years in the future? And did it change, or at least hypothetically, would it change in their opinions? So, and they basically said there's too many variables, so they really don't know. So, right?
Yeah, that's exactly.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I have a second question.
This is a planning tool, especially when you're talking about, I mean, you're talking about redistricting or potential redistricting a number of years down the road. We just want to be able to know, is that even a mechanism that you would consider or even have on the table when you go to the state to have that conversation about your racial imbalance plan? Is this worthy of saying, well, we have something, we're testing it, this is the best available analysis we can do right now? It takes a while to go through a building project that may be predicated on that, but this is our thought process and, you know, we're keeping it under consideration. That's how I would advise as a consultant to be able to handle that conversation with the state saying, you know, and they completely understand this level of planning. This is what we do and present quite frequently at the State Board of Ed for other communities that are going through racial imbalances that also require some facility work. And, you know, the process of going through facility, construction, grant application, design, everybody knows it takes a while. I mean, everybody knows it takes a while, but if you don't do your planning, you don't wait till the school is built and then begin doing your planning. So it just shows that you're, sort of, lack of a better term, planning ahead.
Okay. Mr. Patton, you had a second question?
Yes, so you, and you touched on it actually briefly, talked about, again, for example, if we used an Option D for, you know, for when the Holland Hill project was done, and then you talked about a second, you know, possible pocket redistricting for the other side of town for Mill Hill and Sherman. Did you do any models or mockups for that second pocket redistricting or anything that we could extrapolate? Or would that be an additional thing that if we wanted you to do something like that that you would have to do?
Yeah, we kind of just looked at it internally but didn't present anything with the administrative team because we weren't quite sure if it worked. It would just be something to consider. But you would imagine that you would have about a 10% overall if it was of the same magnitude that the Scenario D was at 5%. We didn't fully vet it, though.
Okay. Yeah, because I'd personally be very curious just to see that information, to see, you know, for, you know, we had whatever it was, 100 and something students moved in Option D. And maybe there was an Option G for Phase Two to do the other side of town, you know, at a later date where maybe there was also only maybe 100 or so students that we can move, which is still better than the 500 or the 700 students in the E or the F.
Mm-hmm.
So. Could I actually ask you a question through the chair to Dr. Title?
You have the floor.
So Dr. Title, would you, I mean, in all terms of reality, presenting things to the state, does it make sense to go with an EF when the whole shebang is done? Or to do, you know, a redistricting in small phases like a D and a G in terms of disruption?
Kind of asking, what's the next step?
Yes, exactly. What would the next step be in terms of?
I think we, we're going through it now, which is, need to have further conversation about, you know, are any of these really viable options for this community? And make a decision about really, how do we want to report to the state where we are with this? We've been working hard on this, but it's pretty clear to me that we're not going to be able to have a revised racial imbalance plan by April. That's fair to say right now. So at this point, I think I would, my thinking would be to go to the state and Mike and Pat would come with us and say, here's what we've done so far. We need more time. If this is ever going to happen, and it may never happen, it's going to take a long time for it to happen. Number one, because you're not going to have these schools built out in time. And number two, it's going to be a very hard sell in the community. So at this point, basically, leave us alone, let us work through it, okay? While we examine potential, maybe there's some other options that don't involve redistricting. Is that your question? Is that why your hands are up in the air? All right, so let me play that out as well. So one thing is to say, well, look, you know, and I also back up. One reason why they didn't do the other redistricting that Mark was talking about is remember, the scope of work, we asked them to solve the racial imbalance problem at McKinley, and we didn't ask them necessarily to solve every other problem in the district. Now, in some cases, they worked together. Remember this whole conversation? So we didn't want to go off doing work, moving kids around on the western side of town without, it has no impact on racial balance. This is a racial balance study. So we can go back to state and say, look, you know, I've done this, this is going to be a really hard sell. We got a lot of feedback in the fall that this community is not really interested in redistricting. This is going to be a major lift, so we need more time, at least on that part. And by the way, we would need more time to look at potential other options. First of all, we are, if the numbers are right, we're actually closer. We improved. I mean, it is not necessarily the case that what we're doing right now is not working. It's just, you know, you could say, give us more time, let this go a couple more years and see if it keeps trending down, see if they go for that. Or you say, and this is sort of the Greenwich approach, and these guys worked in Greenwich, so this is how it plays out. You do the redistricting scenario and you go back to state and say, look, none of these are really palatable, for whatever reason. This is hypothetical. Not palatable, we certainly need a lot of time. And besides, the earliest any of this would happen would be 2019, 20, at the best. So no need to make a big decision right now. Can we look at the possibility, and this is sort of the Greenwich approach, which is the only other known approach that's had any success, if it even works there. West Hartford and Greenwich, the approach has been to try to do something really special at McKinley that would attract children and families on a voluntary basis to send their children out of the attendance zones to McKinley, because what we're offering at McKinley is so attractive that the problem will solve itself on a voluntary basis as opposed to on a mandatory basis. That's not something this district, this school system, the town's ever done. It's been done in other places and there's, you know, Greenwich already has this sort of going on. They're sort of just doubling down on that strategy. West Hartford already had that in place. We have always offered kind of an equitable educational program across all 11 elementary schools. We've never said, this one has a special program, anybody can go to it. That would be a real philosophical change for Fairfield. If you wanted to do that, that would take at least another year's worth of work, maybe two years' worth of work, to identify what would that be, what would it cost, staff training, would it really work? You know, you'd have to do some very intense survey work. I think Greenwich actually hired a different firm to do the work with the community on what would that thing be that would attract people? That's really the only other choice, which is to try to come up with an alternate plan on a voluntary basis that would attract kids to McKinley, that would have McKinley students stay where they are and then fill whatever the extra seats are from other places and some sort of a magnet program. Greenwich has tried to use the International Baccalaureate Program, there's a World Language Immersion Program. There's been a variety of choices. That's sort of the only other choice that I see right now.
Mrs. Maxine Cannelly had her hand attention, followed by Ms. Pitko. Yes, followed by Ms. Pitko.
A few questions. First, I guess this would be to Dr. Title and not the consultant, but I was wondering why with Jennings, there's no reference in all of these numbers to the fact that Jennings still has a portable? So that actually these utilization rates are not accurate?
It's actually, we only counted the portables that are used for day-to-day instructional space, I believe.
The general ed.
Yeah, right now, it's being used for storage, I believe, at Jennings.
Sherman's used for storage.
Storm's used for storage.
Jennings has music in it.
Music in it, that's what it was.
Right, so it's only if it was a core classroom.
Capacity-driven, yeah, core classroom.
Okay. And then I was wondering, and this again would be a question to Dr. Title regarding staff. When you got any of these numbers, you know, if we were looking at these as actual realistic options, was there any sensitivity? Because we always talk about, it's not just that you're moving a bulk of bodies, but now you're impacting the number of class sections offered at schools based upon who it is that would be transferring. Is that something that it even reached the level of looking at that?
No, we haven't even gone there. I mean, we've been moving people around now at the elementary level based on changing clumps of students and so forth quite a bit the last few years. So we didn't get to that level of analysis. We were up at this conceptual, you know, would this even work?
Right.
Theoretically. You know, we've always planned to put these teachers where the kids are. And that's what we'd have to, we'd have to do in this case, too. We didn't do that analysis, though.
And then my third question is, when you go to the state and assume that you are saying, as you've just indicated, that this is not something viable to the community, do you require anything by way of tangible evidence of that? I.e., do we need to put out the APB for emails and other communications indicating the community's feeling on this subject?
You know, I think we've gotten that. You know, I mean, the board can do what it wants on that. I think that what I would plan to do is probably with Mike and have a conference call with Commissioner or Commissioners Representative and say, here we are, you know, you've got a deadline, you want something from us, here's where we are with it. What do you think will fly? And see what we can get in terms of reaction. But I don't know that we necessarily need to have any more evidence on how people feel about redistricting. We couldn't play the tape of the town hall meeting. But if the board wishes to do that, or the board is unsure now that there's real options out there, then there's nothing that would prevent you from scheduling another one of those and having people come in and tell you what they think. But I would just suggest that might be at a, not at a regular board meeting.
But the point being, you don't need anything.
I don't think, I don't think we need anything right now, given what we've had. I mean, we have documentation, we've had several meetings, we had a subcommittee, we had Mrs. Gerber's minutes, and you had a very extensive town hall on this, we've had public comment on this. So I'll ask that question when we talk to somebody at the state and see, you know, or will you simply, you know, be willing to listen to what we have here? So I'll find out, but right now, I don't think we need anymore to have at least a conversation of where we sense things are going. But this is also where, you know, we need to hear it from the board members themselves as representatives of the community about what your preferences would be at this point.
And I'd only make one comment. Did you want to make a, I'd only make one comment. In your documents, you said, and we looked at what the 16, 17-year could look like with the new boundaries. That was an academic exercise for the public here and for the TV audience. It's only an academic exercise. This board has no plans at the moment to look at that seriously, implementing it that quickly. In fact, my guess is that until Holland Hill is built, we couldn't even think of implementing something until that happened, based on your report. My understanding of it anyways. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Assuming that we go back to the state and tell the story that nothing suits at this point, how many other districts are there now that are not in compliance within Connecticut? And is this something that comes to a head at some point that we are being forced to comply within a period of time? Or is it possible that the construction takes... Or is it possible if the construction takes 10 years, it takes 10 years? Or what is the precedent?
I don't know the exact count until the report is released in April or May, when everybody gets the letter. But my guess would probably those that actually have an imbalance. So, the greater than 25% will probably plus or minus count on one hand for elementary schools. I think one of the key things, and I've sat on enough of the hearings of the state board of Ed, even when you draft the plan, they realize that it's incremental. I mean, and I'm looking at the nominal percent increase, but it was, it was like a 1.2 or so, little over 1% improvement this year. If you were to extrapolate that improvement out to when the year would be when construction would be completed at Holland Hill, you could theoretically be below the 25% if the opting continued and the trends continued. The state recognizes that it's a moving target. The state is just asking, I think, from all the districts, is that everybody makes a good faith effort to comply? And realizing that it takes time, and it takes time to be able to move these plans forward. So, when you talk about an option that is predicated on a potential school construction program, at the state board of Ed for racial balance plan, they understand that. We went through that with the town of Manchester probably four years ago or maybe a little longer, and they're finally doing the school construction project now. All that they required them to do was to give updates annually, but they had a reorganization plan in place that involved moving some grades around to have compliance, but they needed some construction to be able to do that. So, I don't think they're expecting sweeping changes from one given year to the next. No. I think they realize that, you know, it's a process and it takes time and that something like this, even school construction, redistricting, reconfiguration, any of that, takes buy-in from the community, it takes thought, it takes planning, so that, yeah, they're very well aware of the time factor.
Anything else from the board? If not, thank you very much for your work. Oh, Ms. Lou Ellen, didn't get the hand up that I noticed.
Thanks. So, are you saying that there is no, as you like to call it, pocket redistricting that can occur to solve our problem in the near term? That's not a viable solution?
We actually tested that, and I believe the best we got was around 24% or so, 24.5%. The problem is, is that in order for the pocket redistricting and option D to work, it's predicated on being able to move the McKinley students to Holland Hill. And if there's no space there, permanent brick and mortar space, especially as part of like a 504 school, which we tested it at under option D, it's very difficult to be able to facilitate that movement in a pocket redistricting. That's where you end up with our options A, B, and C under the no build, where we had the domino effect, where we're using little bits of space in each school and impacting smaller, little neighborhoods in order to accomplish the same goal without having one centrally located sort of pot of free space to help facilitate it. So, yeah, without that infusion of space, the pocket redistricting is not going to get you to a comfort level from a racial standpoint at McKinley where we would be confident in saying, yeah, this is a long-term fix.
And you keep mentioning Holland Hill. It's not possible to move folks either to Jennings or Stratfield or one of the other schools that touch? Or is that because of the location of where the individual students live?
Exactly, yeah. So, the area of McKinley with the highest minority concentration is the area that borders Holland Hill. And, you know, all of our scenarios had the movement of very similar areas in that area, kind of just north and just south of I-95. You know, the only way to potentially do that would be to move that area to another school, which, you know, we didn't see as a viable option, given the kind of, you know, it wouldn't be a contiguous district, for example, if that area was sent to Stratfield or Jennings.
Yeah, the area of McKinley that borders Stratfield, the composition of students there isn't as, it's kind of similar. So, you don't get the impact. You're moving much, many more students, and you're not getting that diversity impact that you would get with the McKinley, the Holland Hill. So, it's kind of like a balance between the criteria and realizing that, you know, we probably don't want to move such a large number of students to have such a minimal impact.
Okay, thank you. And then, if we look at page nine for one second, you've got your birth decay per ratio there, and you've got a pop 13, 14, 14, 15, 15, 16. Are those based on preliminary numbers or actual numbers? And if they're actuals, what do you attribute that pop to? Are you seeing that in other towns, or is this unique to Fairfield?
No, we have a chart, we track it from all the other communities in Fairfield County that we're doing enrollment projections for. We're seeing a lot of, and it's different in each community when we drill down to the drivers. We're seeing a lot of families moving in with children in between zero and four. So, they may move in with a first grader, a second grader, or a third grader to enter the system, but what we're seeing is that they have two, one or two children that are zero to four. And that number is causing that birth decay to escalate. And whether it's a sign of, you know, an improving housing market, or a sign of when the Great Recession happened, that it provided opportunities for people to rent homes that would have otherwise been sold, a more affordable opportunity to buy into a community, a lot of different drivers, which are almost too difficult to pin down. But we're seeing, we've seen this same trend across the board in probably five or six other communities, and we've seen it happen a little earlier than this. And those other communities, going back to Ridgefield as far as four years ago, we saw that huge jump of like 15% for birth decay. And then, we saw it happen the successive years. In Wilton, we saw that huge jump of the birth decay. However, the last year of data, it went back down. So, what we don't want to do is put too much influence on that right now in our projections and saying you're going to have, you're going to have a much larger K-class, we think it's going to be closer to the 126% versus the 117%. So, we've taken a three-year weighted them equally and said, whoa, we're just going to wait and see. Do projections next year and see where the number lines, because two years in a row could be the start of a trend, or it could come back down to normal.
Okay. And those are actuals there?
Yeah, they're actuals, because the 15, 16 is predicated on the 2011 births, which aren't preliminary.
And then, your birth projections, you've got one, single-family home sales, and you have unemployment, and you have births. What are your, basically, your confidence levels and how does it line up with each of those three drivers? What's the biggest driver? What are the confidence levels around those drivers?
Sure, so we ran a regression analysis and basically tried to find the best fit that we could. I believe that these two variables explained about 85% of variability with the births. And again, you know, the two are related to each other, too. You know, obviously, the home sales and the unemployment rate kind of go hand-in-hand with each other as well. But this was just kind of our best guess effort in terms of assumptions, in terms of economic improvement, home sales climbing back up that we.
Yeah, and we didn't want to overstep and be too aggressive on this. I think when you look at what are home sales, which we're plugging into that equation, as well as what are unemployment rate, they kind of get you a split between 2006 and '07 and 2008 and '09, kind of in that key time period. We're not waiting and saying that it's going to return to the boom days of the 2000s, but we're also saying we're not going to have this continued depressed economy coming out of the Great Recession.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, this isn't a question so much, although thank you very much for all of this really detailed work. Just more of a comment would be that I know that we do have the middle school and high school impact in terms of enrollment, but one thing that we don't have here that I think is important to remind everyone is that scenarios D, E, and F all have an impact on the feeder plan for the middle schools and the high schools. For instance, in D, you have Holland Hill, and then this is E. So, you've got McKinley to Sherman, Holland Hill to Sherman, Holland Hill to McKinley, McKinley to Holland Hill. That all impacts both middle school and high school. So, it's just something that, you know, I think it's important that the public is aware of this, because we're, I know we're focusing specifically on the elementary schools, but obviously, a lot of people, where their children go to middle school and high school is also very important. And, you know, scenario E has six shifts in middle school and three shifts for high school. And F has, I think, like 10 of one, yeah, 10 middle school and three high school shifts in terms of where the students will be going. So, I just think that that's something that's really important, not so much for you, but for us and for, you know, everyone, to just make sure that people are aware that we're not just, even though we're just talking about elementary school, and even though we do talk about the capacity of the buildings, the students who are there are going to be coming from different areas. And that's something that I think is really important in terms of the public's awareness.
Yeah, totally. We wanted to draw some attention to it. And if this is something, any of these reconfigurations you're going to move forward with, you really want to be planning ahead for that sibling, looking at where the siblings are going and ensure that you could have continuity with families. And you don't, you want to start as soon as possible on that if it's something you're going to move on.
Right. And then, I think another issue, you know, so that feeds into the whole idea of additional costs with busing, plus, I mean, I know that it didn't even enter into this, but we, you know, the idea of grandfathering. You know, the more students you have being impacted, the more potential you have for extreme costs in terms of grandfathering, or you have siblings at different schools, two sets of buses, you know, all of these things that, you know, have a major impact, both in terms of cost and also in terms of, you know, what the public wants or doesn't want to have, so.
Ms. Lou Ellen, I think you've got the last question.
Actually, you bring up a good point, and I was going to ask this. The functional capacity at Ludlow High School, is that current, or is that prior to the addition?
We haven't changed that. The Ludlow one?
So, 1,400 is an incorrect capacity?
1,400 is the, the pre-addition capacity.
Yeah, we didn't survey the buildings. I believe we used the most recent capacity sheets that we had in October, so.
From 2010?
Just opened this year, so.
Yeah, I think it was prior to this year's opening.
No, I'm talking about capacity, sorry.
We didn't adjust the high school ones, this low down-the-road impact, so we didn't change that number.
What is the capacity number at the high school post-addition?
I don't know. Those numbers are calculated differently from like elementary schools. So, have to go back and see what the formula was, have to consult with Mr. Cullen on how we do that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. You can stay for our regular business meeting, or you can be on your way.
Thank you. You enjoyed our time, but I think we'll head out.
Is any of that equipment yours?
We're just going to take our thumb drives with us.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. Dr. Tittle wishes to walk them out and thank them. So, on to 6A, the recommended approval of the superintendent search committee. Recommended motion is that the Board of Education be appointed as the search committee for the purpose of conducting a superintendent search. Do I have a motion, Ms. Pitco? Do I have a second? Mrs., my apologies. Mrs. Gerber, any discussion on this motion? Any discussion on this motion that's in front of us at the moment? If there's no discussion, I'll go to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment on the motion that the Board of Education be appointed as the search committee for the purpose of conducting a superintendent Nobody coming forward? Back to the board. Any further discussion or comment? If not, all in favor, raise your hand, please. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. 6B, approval of the Fairfield Woods Middle School re-roof. Recommended motion, that the Board of Education approve the Fairfield Woods Middle School partial re-roof educational specifications. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Calabrese. Any discussion on the Fairfield Woods Middle School roof specifications? Partial re-roof. Seeing none from the board, out to the public. Any member of the public wish to make a comment on the Fairfield Woods Middle School re-roof educational specifications? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to act? All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, 90. Thank you very much. Item 6C, approval of the Fairfield Public Schools Security Project Educational specifications. Recommended motion, that the Board of Education approve the Security Project Educational specifications. Do I have a motion? Ms. Pitco, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. I will take, bring your attention to the fact that these ed specs aren't as fully developed as you might be accustomed to seeing, but that is for what we have repeated over the last several years, obvious reasons that our chief of police would prefer less is more. But nonetheless, any questions on the ed specs for the safety and security improvements? I didn't see which one first, but Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, followed by Mr. Lou Ellen.
Just because that was my question, which you've already alluded to. However, I thought there were certain required questions for the state for when this goes to them, and this obviously is not following that format.
So, our two crack staff who have an answer to that question will come forward, and please introduce yourself for the TV audience. You understand the question?
Yes.
Tom Cullen, Director of Operations.
Sal Morbido, Manager of Construction.
And Sal actually worked on these ed specs.
I worked with the state. They reviewed the draft. They understand our concerns about security. So, it went through several offices up at the state, schools, construction grants, and they're in agreement that we can use it in this fashion.
And just to be clear, that's not the normal procedure. So, this was deviating for that exact purpose.
Yeah, it's usually a bit more verbose and more detailed. They understand what we're doing, and they agreed with it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lou Ellen. Nope, same question?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, out to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment on the recommended motion about the Security Project Educational specifications? Seeing nobody coming forward, back to the board. Are we ready to act? All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, 90. Thank you very much. Item 6D, approval of the Dwight UI Energy Opportunities. Recommended motion, that the Board of Education approve the Dwight UI Energy Opportunities project as enclosed, which is enclosure number five. Any questions from the board? This is similar to the other UI Energy Opportunities grants that we've done. Huh?
Could we move a second?
I read it, I think I forgot to ask.
You didn't move a second.
I only read it, I didn't ask for a first and second. Yes, it's moved. Mr. Calabrese, second. Thank you very much. Saved me again. Any questions from the board on this grant opportunity? Well, I'll go with Mr. Lou Ellen first, in case he wants to ask the same question you did.
And it may, it's not specifically toward this, but we've got more paper here than we do on the math program, but that's a different issue. We have, we appreciate that, but we look at, we've done a bunch of these in the last 12 to 18 months. Have you gone back and looked at what the actual savings are? Are they, are the folks who are putting these together on the third party, the outsiders, are they bang on? Are we ahead, or are we behind? Savings, energy savings?
They're safe, yes. They are reducing energy in the method that.
But are they reducing the kilowatt usage by the percentage they say they are?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
That was one of my two questions, was is this, you know, bear, is the, you know, change bearing fruit? And also, just, were we aware of this in terms of the building of the budget? Is this something that's having impact then, or it would have impact the following year?
This will be the following year because of the time it will take to implement.
Okay, thank you.
I went out, no, I haven't gone out to the public yet. Any member of the public wish to comment on the Dwight UI Energy Opportunity project? Seeing nobody come forward? Any other comments or questions from the board? If not, are we?
Question, we're not supposed to have comments. If nobody in the public comments, we go straight to a vote.
That's not in our bylaws, but it has been a practice of the RTM frequently. Mr. Lou Ellen, did you have a question, a quick question or not?
Well, I think it might be helpful if you guys just at least tell us what the payback period is for, you know, as Phil would like to say, the TV public.
The payback period for Dwight is under four years.
And for? Well, you can ask that question when we get to the second one, right?
We can both all at once.
Okay, are we ready to act? All in favor, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous, 90. Thank you very much. We are now on to the approval of the Osborne Hill UI Opportunities Grant. The recommended motion, that the Board of Education approve the Osborne Hill UI Energy Opportunities project as enclosed. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Calabrese, you want to ask the same question, Mr. Lou Ellen, of this project?
36 months.
Any other questions from board members on this project? Mr. Patton.
What is the reasoning that this one would payback in one year sooner than the other one?
Each project is usually different, but the main point why this one is a shorter payback than Dwight is Dwight, if you're not realizing now, is getting a solar panel project. It lowered our per-kilowatt cost at Dwight, so we're saving smaller pennies. So, it expanded the payback period. When I originally was looking at it, they were both three-year payback periods, and once we took into account. And once we took into account the savings from the solar, it just fit inside the Energy Opportunities Grant.
Okay, thanks. That makes sense.
Any other questions from board members? If not to the public, any member of the public wish to comment on the Osborne Hill UI Energy Opportunity Project? No one coming forward. Are we ready to act? All in favor, please raise your hand. Nine oh, thank you very much. Approval of the Dwight Re-roof Project. Recommended motion, that the Board of Education accept the Dwight Re-roof Project, TMP 051, GTLZ, as complete. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Patton seconded. Questions or comments from the board members? Mr. Lou Allen?
What is the final reimbursement amount? In other words, what have we not yet been reimbursed?
I do not have that number right here, but it is twenty-five and some fraction percent of the total cost, which was...
So we have not received any of the state portion of this project?
We have not received it. It was just filed this month. It would be due in the month of April to the town.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? If not to the public? I'm sorry, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
And this may be repetitive from questions past, but what was the guarantee period again for the roof?
Twenty years.
And we're within that twenty-year period? How old is the roof right now again?
Months old. It was completed in September.
In September, okay.
No questions from the board. Out to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment on the Dwight Re-roof Project acceptance? Seeing nobody coming forward, back to the board. If you're ready to act, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Approval of the Osborne Hill Project. Recommended motion, that the Board of Education accept the Osborne Hill Project, 0510124, as complete. Mrs. Gerber, who watches this project carefully, has the honor of making the motion. Mrs. Carnell seconds. Any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, followed by Mr. Lou Allen.
Just regarding the last statement on the memo regarding that the acceptance will be after they're determined of the completion of all work on a separate but related project. Is that the connector?
Correct.
And what, what's, and I apologize if, because I'm sure if, if this is known, Mrs. Gerber has probably already told us, and I don't recall it. What is exactly the fight at that point in terms of what's the holdup? What's determining it? What's the timeline?
There, um... The committee is working with the, the town attorney on some closeout issues with the present GC. And that determines the final dollars. It may be going out to bid once again, the connector, in probably within a few weeks.
Thank you.
Mr. Lou, uh, do you mind if, Mrs. Gerber?
Well, just as an FYI, the building committee is meeting this week. So if there are any new developments, I'll be happy to email the board, but we're still kind of in a little bit of limbo right now. Which is why I hadn't said anything specific about it, because there is nothing specific to report at this specific juncture.
It's, it's waiting on it going back out again? Is the primary holdup at this point?
No, it's...
There's negotiations with the current contractor.
It's complicated.
Yeah. Mr. Lou Allen?
What caught my eye was, and I'm familiar with the work, but what caught my eye is this one's referenced as the Osborne Hill Elementary Code Violation Project. Can you expand on that?
Yes.
I see smiles, so obviously there's something here.
That's the, yeah, we, we had that discussion. That, that would raise a question. Under state, under state filing rules, that's the category that it fits in. Remediation.
It is remediation.
Because it's remediation, it's a code violation.
I figured as such, but didn't know if there was something bigger there.
Nothing, nothing more than that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board on item six G, Osborne Hill Project? If not, out to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment on the Osborne Hill Project acceptance? Seeing nobody coming forward, back to the board for action. If we're ready to act, all in favor, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. So the other third of this page belongs to Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, the first reading of policies for deletion. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
And we'll have something similar to this at the March meeting. When we're voting on this, it will be a new set. So this is, these are the results, or part of what we're working on as a result of the audit done through CAE. It's fine, and what you'll notice in here is not only exact redundancy, but also the beginning of recodifying with new numbers to make it more consistent with what CAE has. And so there's, there aren't, this isn't about the language. This is about cleaning up the book. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Or if you could send them to me in advance, I always appreciate that, if it's possible.
If there are no questions at the moment, then we look forward to having this on the agenda for the next regular meeting. Approval of the minutes, item number seven. Recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the January twelfth, two thousand and sixteen special meeting motion. Mrs. Pitko, followed by Mrs. Gerber. Any questions or comments on this set of minutes? If not, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, opposed? Abstained?
I think this is the one.
What? You, opposed. Seven one one. Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick abstained. Recommended motion, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the January nineteenth special meeting. Ms. Pitko and Mr. Calabrese seconded. Any questions or comments on this set of minutes? If not, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, opposed? Mr., uh, two opposed, Mrs. Lou McCormick and Mr. Lou Allen. And item seven C, recommended motion, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the January twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen special meeting. Any comments or questions on these set of minutes? Oh, yeah, I should move this, okay. Mr. Patton? Ms. Pitko? Thank you. Thank you again. Any questions or comments on this set of minutes? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, opposed? Mr. Lou Allen and Mrs. Lou McCormick. And approval of the minutes for January twenty-eighth. Recommended motion, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the January twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen regular meeting. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber? Ms. Pitko? Any questions or comments on this set of minutes? Having none, please raise your hand if you're in favor, all in favor. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, opposed? Mrs. Lou McCormick and Mr. Lou Allen. Superintendent's report.
Well, I haven't had a chance to say anything to the whole board since I announced my retirement. And in a, in a perfect world, I would have done this at a board meeting rather than just in, in a written form. And I just want to say that I have a great interest personally, professionally, emotionally, in this school system. I will have it now going forward. I will do everything I can do, if there's any role I can play in the transition process. I'm happy to do that. I will do anything I can to find you the absolute best available person, should you wish me to take any role in that. I will say typically, sitting superintendents don't have a big part in the search process. I won't be at the meetings when you meet. But I have a tremendous interest in seeing that the district continue to grow and move forward after, after I leave. We're going to continue to live here. I'm only working about five minutes from home. I tend to be there here for quite a while. I have a daughter who's in seventh grade, who's probably going to very much enjoy not being the superintendent's daughter, particularly when snow days are called or not called. As she's been taking a lot of heat in the Fairfield Woods cafeteria lately. So, um, I really, I love this community. I love the school system. Put my heart and soul into it, and it's really bittersweet to be leaving it. But it was time on a lot of fronts, as I wrote in that letter. I won't re, you know, go over that again. But I just want to tell the board, I will work as hard as I possibly can till the last day I'm here. And I will work, in any way you wish, on the transition. As Bob Raider said, can be helpful, so. Or if you'd rather have me just butt out and keep my mouth shut, I'm happy to do that, too. So just want to say that. And unfortunately, the timing was such that the offer came in the day after the last board meeting. I didn't want to wait until this meeting and then announce it, because time is of the essence here. I wanted you to be able to get, get moving, and you're on the right track. And I'm really optimistic about the school system, about the future of it. I think it's really positioned well to, to move forward. I think the board is moving in the right direction. It will really help attract a good candidate here. And I'm, I'm really, I'm really optimistic about the future of the, of the school system. And I look forward to working for the next six months to keep things going, and then afterwards, as needed. So, anyway, that's my report.
Any questions for the superintendent? There'll be an opportunity for rounds of applause and other things later on. I've already talked to him. He would prefer to sneak out the back door.
Right.
As he does every night when he goes home. But that may not be possible. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Just one quick question, since you were coming from another town body tonight. I was wondering if there were any issues coming out of that meeting?
The Board of Finance heard our quarterly report, which was the same report that you received. I also had given to them, as I had given to you in an email, the update on the Internal Service Fund, where our fund balance is projected to be. There were no, there were no issues. It was the usual give and take and jousting with certain members that I so enjoy. But we're in a good place on that, so they were, they were fine with it. I did say to them, um, out loud in public, so I can say it here as well, that while in the current year, we're not going to feel any impact from the state's cutting back on the special ed excess cost grant. You should know that, and I told them this, that in the governor's proposed budget, there's a reduction in the excess cost grant from the current level of about eight million dollars. And that translates to about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for Fairfield. So I did warn them that that was something, that as they look at our budget going down the road, if they think they see extra somewhere, please understand that, you know, if that holds, if the legislature approves that, that we will be in a bit of a pickle next year to that amount. That can always get changed by the legislature, but we're not going to know that until after the budget's approved. So that was probably the only news item that came out of that. So thank you for prompting that, because I should have said that in the first place. Thank you.
And the status of the IT server?
Oh, the IT server room. That looks like, based on talking to Joe Michelangelo before the meeting and the fact that Nancy Burns wasn't there, that they are postponing action on that item. There are several conversations going on right now between the town and the board about future plans for the server room. And they want to look at other options. They want to further explore that. So that looks like that will not happen at the Board of Finance level in time for this, you know, next round of RTM. It looks like it's going to be on the April Board of Finance meeting. So that appears to be the game plan with that one. That's sort of on hold at the moment.
So the capital projects that were scheduled for the RTM meeting, well, Board of Finance and now RTM meeting at the end of this month are still on the RTM meeting, except for the IT server room.
Right. So February twenty-second is the committee meetings, and then February twenty-ninth is the full RTM meeting.
Mr. Patton?
Will we be getting, I guess, one more report on, in terms of healthcare usage before the RTM vote? Usually that's, that's about right, right?
There will be, this is updated monthly now, through the point at which the RTM votes. So the most recent projection you got was December. So there'll be two more months of projections that will be out before the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen vote on our budget. You'll get those as they come. We're not going to wait two months. Aon will do it each month. And then there'll be another month's projection available before the RTM votes. Still, at the time that the RTM votes, we will not know April, May, or June. So there's still going to be a three-month unknown in there, but that's the best we can do.
Committee and liaison reports. Any member of the board have a committee or liaison report that they wish to make? I'll only make one. Holland Hill, you probably read in the newspaper that they found a nineteen ninety guideline that suggested that a member of the Board of Education, although it's allowed in state law, should not serve as a voting member of the, of a building committee. And so they do want an active voice, if you will, at the meeting. So I will, I have appointed myself as the liaison, rather than as a voting member. But that also impacts the Special Projects Building Committee that, that will have to convert the member of the Board of Ed who is on the Special Projects Building Committee to a liaison position instead of a voting position, as long as the Board of Selectmen still have this approach. So I'll send that, I'll... We're both demoted, yes. But I think it's more important that we have our voice more than anything else. Any other committee or liaison reports? If not, open board comment? Any member of the board have an open board comment they wish to make? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Just very briefly, I said it earlier with the high school reps were here, and I just wanted to repeat again for the board. Just strongly, strongly encourage any board members who can make the a cappella night this Friday night at Tomlinson. I believe it starts at, the doors, I believe, open at seven. But it is an absolutely fabulous night of music, quite different from the Christmas concerts. And again, it's both high schools with multiple performances, all three middle schools. They usually have a group, I'm not sure, I saw the name. I'm not sure what college they might be from. But usually a college group comes as well that has a Fairfield High School graduate as part of the program. And it's just an absolutely wonderful night of music that I strongly encourage people to attend.
Are tickets available in advance, or are they at the door?
At the door.
Okay.
Other open board comment? I'll only, February twenty-second. You're the liaison to the RTM, correct, Mr. Patton? Will you be able to be at those committee meetings? Oh, good. My niece is doing Broadway plays, Billy Joel. So I am going to go see that, my wife tells me. So, thank you. You'll cover that, so that the RTM does not ask where the chairman of the board is. Thank you. If there's no further comment, a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Carnell. All in favor, please raise your hand. And it's all unanimous. Thank you very much.